Good evening and welcome to the November 12th zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fark, who is the deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way here, I have Mr. Steve Lionel, he's our vice chair, Ms. Mariella McKay, who's our secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, I act as your chair. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony to the microphone and only one person speak at a time, please. If you don't have tonight's copy of the agenda, you'll find it in back of the auditorium. Tonight we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. I'll explain both of those. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. There are five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception. Those are: one, the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city and Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any in all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. We have three members this evening. I haven't heard anything about anybody recusing themselves. If that's the case, we'll cover that when we get to that case, but right now we have a quorum this evening per our Nashua bylaws. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have a right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the city and Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is called the public hearing. This is where the applicant and the citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case. The order of testimony is as follows. One, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Two, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Three, those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then, the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal, and finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be addressed to the board and we'll get them answered. Second part of tonight's activities is called a public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of each case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we ask that you step out in the hallway. The acoustic is excellent in this auditorium, so we can hear everything that's being said in the audience. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there's one change. The Pizza Hut proposal at 303 Main Street has been postponed by the applicant to the November 26th meeting.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions in the audience before we get started? Okay, seeing none. I'll call the first case to order. That is for the owner, Rasp LLC, Peter Doloff, 5 Everett Street, it's in the IRC zone. The description is amendment from a stipulation of approval from the June 27th, 2017 ZBA meeting to allow a five-foot-tall black iron bar fence along Stevens Avenue instead of a solid stockade fence.
My name is Peter Doloff, 2 Knightsbridge Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. I represent Rasp LLC. Just as a quick background, some of you folks may remember when you approved this project about a year and a half ago, there was some concern from the neighbors on Stevens Avenue that, once we built this apartment building, that some of the residents might park over on Stevens Street and try and go in the back door of the building. Stevens Street's a very narrow street. It already has a lot of residences and a lot of driveways and parking, so it's pretty tight. At that time, we agreed to put a stockade fence up, and what this map represents, the dark black line is the stockade fence which we have already installed, so it goes along our parking lot, along the back of our parking lot, up the side of our property, then ties into our buildings, so there's no way to get through here. The proposed fence is the green line, which we're proposing to do in a black wrought iron fence as opposed to a stockade fence, and I'll discuss that a little further. One of the things that we were unaware of when we started this project is, on Stevens Street, there's an apparatus called a rectifier, and most of you are probably asking what a rectifier is. It's something that Liberty Utilities puts in, and it takes electricity and trickles a small amount of electricity into the gas lines and prevents them from corroding over time and rusting. They relocated their rectifier from directly in front of our building down to the corner, and they put it a couple of feet off of Stevens Street. They have to have access to that rectifier from Stevens Street, so we cannot put a stockade fence in front of it, because they would not be able to access it and maintain it. So in order for us to put a stockade fence, we would have to put it three feet behind the rectifier, which would put it seven feet off of our building. So the stockade fence would literally run through the bark mulch bed of our stockade building, and the windows on the first floor would, of course, not be able to see outside What we're proposing is, instead of the stockade fence, to put a black wrought iron fence, tie it into this corner of the building, go out to the street, go along the street. So in the end, we're achieving the same goal. Nobody can park on our property and get over to Stevens Street without walking all the way out to Led Street, walking down Led Street, and then coming in Stevens Street. They completely can't get over there. The other thing we've done, and I will show you in the pictures, the back door on Stevens Street, we took the doorknob off, so there is no way to come into the building from Stevens Street. It's a blank. You can only egress the building onto Stevens Street. There's no doorbells over there, there's no access, so there's no reason for somebody to park over there. The other issue we found, when we did run the stockade fence all the way down our property line to the corner of Stevens Street, and we found that the folks in 10 and 12 Stevens, they parked behind their building. When we run our fence all the way to the corner, they're unable, when they come out to Stevens Street, they cannot look left, because their building blocks them, and when our fence goes out to that corner, they cannot look right either. They can't see people coming off of Led Street. So when somebody comes off of Led Street, and these folks are pulling out of their driveway, they literally have to pull their entire car out into the road before they can look right or left. So by us pulling the fence back ten feet, it at least allows them, before their nose gets out into Stevens Street, they can look to the right, and they can see the Led Street intersection, and at least be safe from cars coming off Led Street. We can't help their look to the left down Stevens Street, but at least people coming up Stevens Street, which is a dead end, are going very slow versus coming off Led Street at a much higher rate of speed. The other big thing is aesthetics. We've put in a big patch of lawn here. It's irrigated, it's fertilized, it's, it looks nice after just a couple of months, it's gonna be a beautiful lawn. If we put a giant stockade fence on Led Street and Stevens Street, nobody's gonna see it. When you come down Led Street, you're just gonna see a woodstockade fence. When you come around Gate City Fence, you're just gonna see a stockade fence. You're not gonna see the grass, you're not gonna see the shrubs, you're not gonna see the trees. Desperately needed in this part of town, anything green in this part of town is a great The other factor is safety. A stockade fence provides blind spots for people to hide. People coming off the rail trail, people coming out of the park, if they're trying to do something nefarious, they can get behind the fence, they can hide, there's blank corners, nobody's gonna see them. We have put lights on all four sides of our building, it's well lit. The city has some nice streetlights out on Led Street, but again, you would create a lot of dark corners with a stockade fence. The other problem with the stockade fence is you provide a big blank canvas for people to work with spray paint and graffiti, and over time, I'm sure this fence would be covered with graffiti. The final piece I'd like to mention is, this certainly is not about money. The cost of putting the stockade fence up, the way that we had recently talked about at the planning board meeting that night, is $3,750. The cost of putting a black wrought iron fence up is $16,500. So we're here tonight to argue, to spend a lot more money, to put up a much more attractive fence, to allow the residents of Nashua to see the green grass, see the beautiful property, and not hide it from behind a stockade fence. I strongly believe the proposal still meets the original intentions of keeping all of our residents and all of our traffic on Everett Street. It does not allow anybody to get over to Stevens Street from our property. I believe we still meet the intent, but I think we're doing it in a much more aesthetically pleasing manner than was originally discussed. I have some pictures, and I'll just quickly hand them around, you folks can look at them. Thank you. With that, I conclude.
So the, just, the original intent, I think, was for privacy. I think there was a lot of concern about folks living on Stevens Street, but I think what I'm hearing from you is, is that the folks who live on Stevens Street right now that are most affected by the stockade fence don't really have, are looking to have a little bit of relief off of that, so they can see, right? And, you know what I mean? And then, and then the other length of stockade fencing, I don't know if anybody will come up, I'm just, I don't know if you could speak to that or not.
I think some, some of the residents would still like to see the stockade fence. I believe the folks in 8 and 10 who are not affected by pulling in and out, I believe that, I haven't had a discussion with them in a while, but I believe they would still like to see a stockade fence. The folks in the next building that actually park behind and have to pull out, I think they're much happier with the way we set the fence up, because now they can see.
Yeah.
So I think those folks are happier. So I don't wanna speak for them, I think the feelings are split on that street.
Okay.
I think most residents on that street realize that our building's not impacting them at all, there's no traffic, there's no pedestrian traffic or car traffic over there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions, Mr. Lionel?
I have two questions. First is, you talk about a wrought iron fence, although in your packet, you attached a page from Home Depot website about a steel fence. Is, which are you, I mean, a steel fence would be, is not wrought iron and would tend to rust over time. What is your intention there?
Well, I am talking about a modern faux wrought iron fence. It's not gonna be actual wrought iron like the cemeteries have around them, it's gonna be the more modern aluminum fencing you would buy from Gate City Fence or Home Depot. It has the look of a wrought iron fence.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
The second question is, when you were talking about the rectifier, I was a little bit confused. How does your plan for the, we'll call it a wrought iron fence, how does that affect where the rectifier is, or where does it go?
The rectifier is the black square you see right here. So our stockade fence ties into the building and just leaves it out near the street where Liberty Utilities put it, and then our next fence picks up on the other corner of the building and comes out. So Liberty Utilities can pull down the street, and there's a telephone pole right here, and the rectifier's right there, so they can back their trucks right up to it and work on it.
So is your, is your intention to remove the existing stockade fence?
Nope, the stockade fence is already set up, it's in place on the left side of the building, and the only thing we have left to do is the green fence on the right, and our intent is not to run a stockade fence along Stevens Street.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I generally don't have any opposition to this. I think if you look at where they're gonna put the wrought iron fence, I think it's the place where there's the least issue with privacy, because it's really on the corner when you're coming down Led Street, so you look through the fence, and I think the applicant made some really good arguments besides the issue with the utilities. I think, A, it'll look nicer, and B, I think it's gonna be a little safer, I think, in that area. I think aesthetically, I, you know, I know what they're looking for is, you know, wrought iron type looking fence, but I think they want aluminum, so it doesn't rust, and they don't have to maintain it as much, but I think the see-through slatted fence, or the bar fence, I think I'm fine with. I don't see any objection to it.
I also don't object to it. I know that traditionally, when we, when we are making stipulations, we generally default to a stockade fence for separation, privacy, whatever, but that's not the only choice. And I agree with the applicant that in this case, a fence that can be seen through but still provides the barrier to people traveling through it is the better choice. Is this okay?
I concur. When, it's ironic, when we put in a stockade fence, we dropped it down a foot and slotted it the last foot for the very, this very reason, you couldn't see coming out of the driveway to make a left turn, or anybody couldn't see to come in. So it makes logical common sense in my head, it's a safety issue.
Okay, anything else?
No, I don't have any problem with this.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for Rasp LLC, applicant's Peter Doloff, 5 Everett Street, it's in the IRC zone. I'd like to make a motion to approve an amendment from a stipulation of approval from June 27th, 2017 ZBA meeting to allow a five-foot-tall black iron bar fence along Stevens Avenue instead of a solid stockade fence. The applicant has given us, per the plan, that's per the plan, that was submitted by the applicant.
The yellow and pink highlighted-
Right, so the applicant submitted a highlighted version of the plan to the, to the planning board, to the planning department, and has shown us what they've already done with the stockade fence, tying into the side of the building, and then the opposite side of the building, they will run a proposed black iron fence, that's shown in the pink highlighted area, and that will go along Stevens Street, Led Street, and Everett Street back to the parking area. So again, per the plan, we approving this per the plan that was submitted to the planning department. With that, I make a motion to approve the amendment to the stipulation.
Second?
Second by Mr. Lionel, only discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Motion's passed. With that, I'll close case number two.
Thank you, folks.
I'd like to open case number three. I'd like to open case number three for John Olapourath, Benchmark Construction Consultants, 6 Woodfield Street. Description is John C. Olapourath, owner, Benchmark Construction Consultants, applicant is 6 Woodfield Street, Sheet B Lot 1454, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 180-16, Table 16-3, to encroach eight and a half feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback to construct and attach five-by-seven front entry portico where existing house is 16 and a half feet from the front property line. It's in the R9 zone in Ward 9. Welcome, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do.
Hi, good evening, I'm Michael Cordes, 39 East Dunsterville Road, Nashua. I work for Benchmark Construction Design. We're in process of trying to provide a front portico for John. The house does sit exactly 28 feet from the curb, they just repaved the road. The setback is actually 16 feet. The portico comes off the front of the house five feet, which would have given him his 11-foot setback. It doesn't meet it, we understood that. So, in process of applying for permits for the rest of the job, they're adding a two-stall garage and they're redoing the whole house. The front portico would have added a lot more character to finish off the front of the house, if it's granted. It bears no safety issues with the neighborhood whatsoever. It does look a little deceiving when you're looking at a plan 11 feet, but the house does sit 28 feet off the, from the curb.
So again, just so people understand, right, you said you talked about garage, you're doing other work there, but that's all within the footprint of the allowable building envelope, but it's the portico-
Correct.
-the front part that you're just trying to add.
Yeah.
And again, the, not the reason, but the reason why the owner's looking for this is, is just because they want some coverage in the area or a munt hall, what's the reasoning behind the portico?
They're trying to define the house as an entry and give it a little bit more character as an entrance. Other than that, the only real way they have is, other than that front doors, they've gotta go around back.
And again, the portico is just, just constructed per the plan here, which I assume, well, I'm not assuming, it shows it's just a one-story addition type of thing, it's not going up two stories and-
No, it comes off the house five feet and it's seven feet wide.
Okay, yeah, okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, is there any other questions, or any questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I did notice that there were several houses in that neighborhood that had porticos of some sort, so it would not be out of character for the neighborhood. I have no issues with the request.
I concur with Mr. Lionel. I too looked and noticed there were other houses that had an overhang or portico, and it just seems logical for weather.
And, the other-
And I'm in support.
Right, thank you very much. The only thing else I noticed as, looking at this application neighborhood, is it's probably the only house that sits way up front. All the other houses seem to be where they belong. So again, again, the position of the house, you know, where it is, but I, again, I don't think that, again, the portico, I think it fits in, and I don't think it's, you know, gonna be really that noticeable that it's an issue there, so. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, John Olapourath, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, right. Applicant is Benchmark Construction Consultants, addresses 6 Woodfield Street, Sheet B Lot 154, excuse me, Sheet B Lot 1454, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 8.5 feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback to construct and attach five-foot-by-seven-foot front entry portico where the existing house is 16 and a half feet from the front property line. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 9. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, being that the house is pushed so far forward on the lot, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The board notes that there are other homes in the neighborhood that have similar porticos, and we believe it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find no evidence that it's contrary to the public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served, so I make a motion to approve the variance.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Your application's been approved. Just be aware of the three-day window of appeal.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number three, and open the public hearing for case number four. Case number four, owner is Victoria Horan, 4 Harley Drive. Description is Victoria M. Horan, Revocable Trust, owner, 4 Harley Drive. Sheet 138, Lot 261, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach 10-by-16 three-season porch. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 1. Welcome, see name and address?
Good evening, board. My name is George Philippides, I'm a-
If you do a favor, I'm sorry-
Sorry.
They record everything, if you could talk into the microphone, or if you need to move it up, thank you very much.
Good evening, board, thank you for your time. My name is George Philippides, I'm here on behalf of my wife, Victoria Horan. We are seeking a four-foot variance for the 30-foot variance, for the 30-foot of our backyard to add a three-season sunroom. This project originally started as a back deck with a roof. As you can see in the plans that we submitted to the building department, we're not sure exactly where, but there was some miscommunication in what the plans were submitted for the back deck and for the front deck, and were put out that, were done that way. As time went through, speaking with the building department, we decided that we wanted to, down the line, maybe turn this into a three-season sunroom, so we wanted to have everything in order in case that did happen. With that said, we decided to move up the timeline to make that three-season sunroom now as opposed to later, because we weren't sure how the rest of the materials are gonna hold up to the bare elements. So upon speaking with Don Misham, she came out, she did the preliminary rough inspection for the framing, which we passed, then I had asked her about insulating the subflooring for that, and at that point, we realized that there was a mix, a mix-up in the application somewhere, where the front and back of the structures were switched. So upon being notified of that, we stopped all construction, applied for the zone, for the permit, no, for the permit, for the variance, I apologize, and that's kinda where we're at right now.
Okay. Any questions? Do you have, sorry, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
The same, no.
No, all set, all right. So basically, you're just looking to enclose a three-season porch. We already see the pictures that construction was started-
Right.
You see that's a one-story unit, so I'm good with that. Any questions for the applicant? No, Ms. McKay? I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor for this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
I don't have a problem with this.
I don't either.
Yeah, it's a four-foot incursion, but I think you wouldn't really notice that. There's a pool back there, obviously, there's nobody here that has a problem, you know, no one's gonna speak with it, so I think, I think it's fine. I'm in support of the application. Does anyone make a motion? Would you like me to make a motion?
You do it, we're gonna probably trade off.
Okay, sure.
It's hard to do that, and it's-
Yeah, since Mariella's writing.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion for Victoria Horan, 4 Harley Drive. Description is Victoria M. Horan, Revocable Trust, owner, 4 Harley Drive. Sheet 138, Lot 261, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach 10-by-16 three-season porch. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 1. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Very straightforward. The applicant has had a deck there, wants to enclose the deck, and is looking for a small incursion into the rear yard setback. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interests, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So with that, I make a motion to approve the area variance for this applicant. Seconded by Mr. Lino. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's three to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's been approved. Just be aware of the thirty-day window of appeal. Okay? You can talk to Mr. Fock about that, but you already started construction, so I don't know if there's really an issue.
Basically, any, anybody can appeal the decision within thirty days. We would issue a permit, you would be working at your own risk just in case, so...
All right, well, with that, I'll close the public meeting for case number four and open the public hearing for case number five. Okay, case number five is owner, 1987 Tamposi Limited Partnership. Address is 57 Northeastern Boulevard. Description is 1987 Tamposi Limited Partnership, owner, 57 Northeastern Boulevard, Sheet 140, Lot 68. Requesting a variance from land use code section 190-101, Table 101-7, to exceed a maximum number of ground signs, one permitted, to propose. It's in the Park Industrial Zone in Ward 6. Welcome Attorney Prunia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunia. I'm the attorney with Prunia and Pearlman at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. For the record, I would also like to object to going forward with three members as required by the Nashville zoning ordinance, as I feel it's unconstitutional violation of my client's rights, but I will proceed.
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you. This piece of property is located on Northeastern Boulevard. It's a 2.2-acre piece of property in a PI zone. Under the PI zone and the requirements, this lot could be subdivided into three lots, and as such, each one of the lots would have their own individual signs. What we are here for is for a variance to have two signs. One in this location on the Wesley side of the building, and one in this location on the Eastly, uh, Eastly side of the building. And the reasons we're requesting the two signs is that the building is, even though it is being used for general commercial purposes, the Wesley side of the building is used primarily for a bank. It's a new bank that's going in, and this side of the building on the Eastly, on the Wesley side, will be used mostly for a bank, while on the, on the Eastly side, the building is in, is going to be used mostly for retail office space as well, and then the main entrance to that side of the building is on the Eastly side. We've tried to, by putting the two signs, hopefully maintain the traffic directions for the general public to whatever use they want to make. If they want to use the bank, they would be coming here to the Wesley side, and if they want to see any of the tenants or the tenants themselves, would come mostly to the Eastly side of the building. The building is pretty much constructed. You've seen, I'm sure you've gone out and seen it. It matches the other buildings that are in the area. The signs, even though we're requesting two of them, the signs themselves will not be larger than what's required in the zone for those particular areas, for that particular park industrial, particular area. We feel that once the location with the sign for the direction of the general public, it will be better for the whole area in that particular section, so people won't be coming to the Wesley side into a bank and not wanting to be there but over on this side, because now they'll be able to see who the tenants are that are on this side in the parking area on this side to be used for that particular area. Board has any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Philippides.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay.
I don't have a problem with this. It makes logical, common sense to identify one business versus another, and if I'm coming to look for the bank, I'd like to know where the bank is, and I just don't see an issue. I'm in support.
Mr. Lino.
I think this is fine. It's a large building, and there are two distinct parking lots, and it's as if there were two independent, well, there are two independent uses of the building. This is a primarily, you know, industrial-type setting along Northeastern Boulevard. I think this is perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, I have no issues either, and, you know, they meet all the other criteria, so there's no other issues. So, I'm in full support of the application.
Okay, well, my turn to make the motion. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, 1987 Tamposi Limited Partnership. Address is 57 Northeastern Boulevard. Sheet 140, Lot 68, requesting variance from land use code section 190-101, Table 101-7, to exceed maximum number of ground signs, one permitted, two proposed. This is in the Park Industrial Zone, Ward 6. Board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. It's a large building with two distinct entrances, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We believe that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. The board believes it is not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice will be served. Therefore, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Application's been approved.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close case number five. I'll close the public meeting for case number five and open the public hearing for case number six. Case number six is owner Nicole Giberson, 53 Blossom Street. Description is Nicole Giberson, owner, 53 Blossom Street, Sheet 94, Lot 20. Requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area of 4,334 square feet existing, 12,445 square feet required to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 6. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
Thank you. I'm Nicole Giberson. My address is 53 Blossom Street in Nashua. So, I'm here tonight to respectfully request the Board to allow the variance to change my home from a single-family home to a multifamily home, being a two-family home. The home is surrounded on all four sides by multifamily homes with a similar size, and the footprint of the house is remaining the same. The driveway provides ample parking for four cars, so two by two. And, you know, I do truly value the community that I'm in, and just in looking around, I feel like the demographic of the change to the home would fit right in, where, you know, the surrounding neighborhood is mostly made up of adults, and again, mostly multifamilies, so I think it would be a welcome change by the neighborhood. And I also have Jim here with me.
Yes.
From Elite Construction.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jim Wagner, and I am project manager with Elite Construction, helping Nicole with this particular project.
Okay.
So, if there are any questions...
Anybody have any questions? Just give us a minute.
Sure.
So, do you, do you occupy the property?
I did. So, we had a fire on the property in July, so I've been out of the home since July, and saw it as a good opportunity in rebuilding to have the chance to make it kind of fit in better.
So, do you, do you plan on, not that it matters for some of us, but do you plan on occupying the property or just being a landlord and...
So, my goal, I have a short term and a long term. Short term goal would be to rent it and then occupy it myself when my kids are older, since it would be only a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom, and more again in like the adult neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just hold on for a second, see if there's any questions.
Can you tell me which of the surrounding properties are multifamily?
We actually can.
Yeah, we actually did a comparison in the neighborhood, and I have at least four of them here that are, that are close by.
We would like, we would like to see that.
Sure.
So, ma'am, just, just, just kind of verbally...
Sure.
Just as we're looking at that, kind of explain, from your house, around your house, what's multifamily?
Sure.
Just kind of, so we understand, kind of...
Yep. So, where my house is on Blossom Street, the house, if I walk out of my front door, the house directly across from me is, I don't know, four-family, maybe? The house to my right is a two-family. The house to my left is a two-family. If I go out my back door to my backyard, the house behind me is a two-family. So it's every direction, and even if I go further, like over, there's at least a three-family. I think there are a few other single-family homes on the street, but for the most part, all of them within, I don't know, two or three houses of mine are all multifamily. So the two neighboring, one would be Seven Ritter, because the house, it kind of turns the corner right there. And the one before mine is probably 51, or there may be a weird numbering convention there.
So your, your property is this sort of L-shaped? It's got this extension in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Because when I looked at it, all I could see was the, the house on the, on what looked like a narrow lot, but there's, there's some, you have some property to the back of the house?
There is, yep. There's a, there's a yard in the back with a small shed. And some land along the side of the house also, about the size of a driveway that goes all the way back.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. McKay.
I'm fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. First look, it's kind of like a lot, but then after you kind of understand what the neighborhood is, the existing neighborhood, taking a look at it, looking at the surrounding properties, kind of trying to take that in, and then looking at the scope of this property, I don't, you know, I don't see the impact by splitting it up, adding more adults there than, than it could be. I mean, again, I'm just kind of, this is kind of what my thought process was. Then looking around the neighborhood, there is multifamilies, you know, more than two. There's some multifamilies, and I think as you move around in that neighborhood, certainly staying parallel with Kingsley Street, I think you find some more of those. So, I do think it kind of fits in. Parking is, meets parking, so, you know, we're not creating a problem, you know, on the street, you know, for the tenants that live there. So I, I think it's reasonable. So, right now, I'm in favor of the application.
Yeah. My, my initial impression was that it was a very small lot that's already undersized by code for a one-family, but then appears that there are a bunch of other houses in the neighborhood that are also of similar size lots that are two-family. So it doesn't seem to be out of character for the neighborhood, though I'm, you know, I'm sort of back on the fence about it.
Ms. McKay.
At first blush, it does kind of take you back a bit, you know, what's required and what exists, but then, understanding the demographics and the fact that it's very much in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, and there's nobody here that has any concerns, I'm inclined to support this. I'll go along with this application.
So, so is there anything else that we could discuss that might help you?
No, I, I, I'm inclined just to support it.
Okay.
I, you know, I said initially, I was not in favor of it, but I can't really justify voting against it at this point.
Okay. All right. Good. I'll make a motion. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for Nicole Giberson, 53 Blossom Street. Description is Nicole Giberson, owner, 53 Blossom Street. Sheet 94, Lot 20, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area of 4,334 square feet existing, 12,445 square feet required to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The approvals of this application find that, again, there are multifamilies surrounding this home. This area of the city is predominantly smaller-sized lots. We recognize that there are several, you know, multifamily units that are in today's specifications under, under the lot size record, but we find that, that, that there is plenty of parking, that, that this would fit into the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. We find it is within the spirit of the intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So with that, I make a motion to approve the area variance. Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's three to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's been approved. Just be aware of that thirty-day window of appeal. Okay? You can talk to Mr. Fock if you need any more information. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number six. Does anybody take a break or you want to go look at more? Okay, all right. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number seven, for NWGM Title Holding Company Two. Applicant is Robert Torrey, Neighborhood Works, Southern Hampshire, 40 Pine Street. The description is NWGM Title Holding Company, owner, Robert Torrey, Neighborhood Works, Southern Hampshire, applicant, 40 Pine Street, Sheet 83, Lot 80. Requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, to encroach up to 9.72 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on Central Street. Two, to encroach up to 1.64 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on Pine Street. And three, for open space minimum of 35 percent, required 33.9 percent proposed. Four, for a minimum lot area of 3,329 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required. And five, variance from land use code section 190-209 subsection C to allow a driveway within 50 feet of a street intersection, 40 feet proposed. All requests to construct a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot in the RC zone, Ward 4. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Robert Turney with...
Good evening. My name is Robert Turney with Neighborhood, Southern New Hampshire, and we're the owners of 40 Pine Street in Nashua. The subject property was purchased by the City of Nashua, I think in 2010, as part of the Broad Street Parkway expansion. And in 2017, when the city concluded that they did not need the property for Broad Street expansion, published an RFP to sell the property for the purposes of providing residential development on that site. And so, Neighborhood, Southern New Hampshire, is a community development organization with a mission around providing housing, and we have a focus on trying to increase the owner occupancy of the neighborhood associated with 40 Pine Street. And so, we responded to the RFP with a proposal to purchase the property, and the city outlined the specifications that they were seeking to have developed on that property, and so that was the nature of our response. And so, we successfully won the RFP. But it has taken about two years to close on the property, because after the time that we entered into the agreement to purchase the property, I think there were some right-of-way issues associated with Central and Pine Street that the city had to resolve, and so this small lot got a little smaller. But nonetheless, we're here tonight to proceed with our initial proposal, which is to develop a two-family property on 40 Pine Street that would be owner-occupied with one rental unit. And so, the nature of the variance, as you described, I'll turn over to Kevin Anderson from Meridian to talk about the details associated with the variance request. And if you have any other questions later, I'll be happy to respond to them.
Thank you.
For the record, Kevin Anderson with Meridian Land Services, 31 Old Nashville Road in Amherst. I'm going to quickly go over the history, because I think that's really important, and then get into the specifications of the RFP.
Excuse me, sir. Would you mind just lifting the mic? You can lift it up. Pull it up. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Is that enough for you? Perfect. So, for the record again, Kevin Anderson, Meridian Land Services, 31 Old Nashville Road. Diving into the history, in March of 2010, the parcel was sold to the City of Nashua. The existing house was demolished as part of the Broad Street Parkway. 2017, the City of Nashua issued their RFP. Neighborhood Works awarded the RFP in 2018, January. Subsequently, in June of 2018, the city performed a taking-on-the-land 237 square feet for right-of-way purposes. The exact probably scope was to encompass some utilities that they had located. September 2019, the parcel is finally owned by Neighborhoods. So, under this RFP, it had specific requirements: high-quality, owner-occupied, or rental housing, complement the neighborhood, and provide a financial return to the City of Nashua. To conclude this, through their negotiations with the city, we're asking for five variances from this board. There are two front setback requests. One is 1.64 feet to the western building setback. That's Pine Street. The requirement there is 10 feet. 9.72 feet of encroachment from the northwestern building setback, and that's 10 feet. And I'll point these out on the plan here, so it's a little easier to note. So, it's 1.64 from Pine Street, and because the property is shaped as it is, 9.72 is this worst-case scenario, which is Central Street. Open space requirements. The parcel is required to have 35 percent open space as proposed. It's 33.9. Minimum lot area, a lot area of 6,970 square feet is required for the two-family. The lot consists of 3,329. And lastly, access and curb cuts, more particular, Section 190-209.C. Driveways need to be located 50 feet from the intersection of a road for corner lots. The actual criteria for this is not spelled out in the regulations, so the worst-case scenario would be from the edge of a driveway to what I'm calling the property corner, and we've got, I think, 40.3 feet shown on our plan. Circling back, the RFP from the City of Nashua, they wanted this lot to be developed to provide a high-quality product, owner-occupied, complementing the neighborhood, and providing a financial return to the city. And I think Neighborhood's proposal is doing that. The applicant has proven through getting the approved RFP that the product is high-quality, owner-occupied, and rental unit meets their criteria, that there's a financial return to the city both through the purchase of the property and taking a vacant parcel and returning it back onto the tax roll. At this time, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Lionel.
I just have one question, and you repeatedly have said owner-occupied, but who would the owner be in this case?
So, Neighborhoods won't be the long-term, I'm sorry, Robert Turney with Neighborhood, Southern New Hampshire. Neighborhoods will be the developer of the property, but we'll sell the property to an owner-occupant, to an individual that wants to live there and be a landlord. We provide homebuyer education, first-time homebuyer education to folks that are first-time homebuyers, and we also provide landlord training to folks that are going to become owners of multifamilies, so that they can live in one unit and collect rent and manage the other unit. So, we have not yet identified who the owner is. We need to get the approvals in place and get it built, and then market the unit for sale to an owner-occupied two-family.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
I'm just going to pass this around, so this is the only incursion in yellow. Mr. Fock, just so you understood.
Yep.
If I can expand on that for one second, please. In the proposal that the city accepted, the building would be sold to a homeowner with an income at or below 120 of the median income of the area. What's more important here is that there'd be a deed restriction on the rental unit to have the tenant rent at 80 percent of the median income in the area. So, there's a restriction on it, coupling the two together, which I think is important for the board to understand.
Okay. Not that it, I'm just curious about this whole owner-occupied. What happens after you, the first owner comes in and wants to sell and wants to walk away or move up and buy that single-family home, is it still becoming owner-occupied, or at that point, really, really, you've successfully done what you needed to do?
Sure. There'll be a deed restriction and a covenant on the property, requiring it to be owner-occupied, and typically, the financing associated with a home requires that you owner-occupy it. There's no prohibition from the person being able to sell it and sell it to another owner-occupant, because that deed restriction will outlast that first homebuyer, that first homeowner. So, that the person that does originally occupy it, if they want to sell it and move on to buy a single-family somewhere, they're free to do so.
But so, it almost precludes an owner-investor?
Correct. It's not meant to be an investment property, and that would be done through a deed restriction tied to the property, tied to the real estate.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Fock.
From Tim Cummings of the city's Economic Development Department, they are in favor of this. He couldn't make it this evening. This is a project to help improve the neighborhood in this case, along with one on Everett Street, and along with the improvements at the park. This has been, you know, on the way to it being a nicer neighborhood. The city is in support of it.
Could you just roughly, without, without forbidding, just tell us what was there before, and what you remembered there being before?
There was a laundromat, and I think a little market, and I believe there was an apartment on the second floor, I think. I'm not positive. It's been gone for a while, and I really haven't been involved with it, but I'm pretty sure that's what was there.
Okay. All right.
Burned down.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
Normally, when we see an application that has lots of variance requests, we are kind of skeptical, but this property has an interesting history, and many of these things were essentially created by the city. I think, you know, the proposal is good. It will have a lot of benefits to the city and to the neighborhood. That the city is supporting it is also important, so I'm in favor of approving all of the requested variances.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think the land taking kind of colludes things a little bit, as you can see with the drawing, where the 9.72 feet come in. As far as the driveway goes, I think all I would say to that is, you know, we're in a part of the city where it's busy, but I think that it helps that Pine Streets are one-way now, so you don't have two-way traffic there. So, I think there's more, a better opportunity for somebody to get up, because they're going to only be able to go one-way on Pine Street, right? So, I think that's, you know, I would be okay with that. So, I'm in favor of the application.
I too. I'm in favor of the application for all of the aforementioned reasons that you both stated.
Okay, my turn.
Yeah. So, I think what we talked about was, Mr. Lionel, would be one through four is one variance, one area variance, and then we'll do number five separately, the driveway.
That's how I would do it.
So, we're going to do one through four.
Okay, one through four. All right. And then do the driveway variance separately.
One through four is together, and then the driveway separately.
So, it's two motions.
Okay, two motions. Okay, so there's two motions. All right, very good. Let's see if I can do this. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, NWGM Title Holding Company 2. The applicant is Robert Turney, Neighborhood Works, Southern New Hampshire, addresses 40 Pine Street. Sheet 83, Lot 80, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. First, to encroach up to 9.72 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on Central Street. Two, to encroach up to 1.64 feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback on Pine Street. Three, for open space, minimum of 35 percent required, 33.9 percent proposed. And four, for minimum lot area, 3,329 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required. All requests to construct a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. This is in the RC Zone Ward 4. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, this has an interesting history, having been taken by the city, sold back by the city, and part of the land being taken away for utility access. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will improve the property values of surrounding parcels, we believe. It is not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be served. Therefore, I make a motion to approve those four variances.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to nothing.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of NWGM Title Holding Company 2, applicant Robert Turney, Neighborhood Works, Southern New Hampshire, addresses 40 Pine Street. Sheet 83, Lot 80, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-209.C. to allow a driveway within 50 feet of a street intersection, 40 feet proposed. Request is to construct a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot, RC Zone Ward 4. The board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. The property is unusually shaped and on a corner. There's no other place to put the driveway, so the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. We believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be served. Therefore, I make a motion to approve that variance.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's been approved. Just be aware of that thirty-day window of appeal, but that's it. Okay? With that, I will close the public meeting for case number seven. Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. Mr. Lionel, you want to lock the door? Make sure he's outside. All set. Okay. All right, we'll come back to order. I'd like to call case number eight. Open the public hearing for case number eight for SafCam LLC, New Hampshire Number One Rural Cellio Incorporated. The address is L. Silver Drive. Description is SafCam LLC, owner, New Hampshire Number One Rural Cellio Incorporated, applicant, L. Silver Drive, Sheet A, Lot 993, requesting the following. One, special accession from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 276, to construct a 130-foot-tall monopole communications tower with an associated service truck containing radio equipment and the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-38, Section C, Subsection 1, to allow a setback of 23 feet 8 inches to the nearest property line, 400 feet required. And two, from Land Use Code Section 190-38, Section C, Subsection 2, to allow a tower within one mile of an existing tower. It's in the general business zone, Ward 7. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gashlin. I'm with KJK Wireless. We represent
Good evening. My name is Bob Gashlin. I'm with KJK Wireless. We represent New Hampshire Number One Rural Cellular, Inc., better known as United States Cellular. And we're here tonight. We've got a site in Southern Nashua. We're on a tower in the Costco parking lot. We lease space on that tower from a company by the name of Crown Castle. We've been operating there for a while, but Crown Castle is losing its, its rights to operate that tower, so they're planning on dismantling that tower sometime in December or January. So we're forced to find an alternative to that site to, to maintain our operations pursuant to our FCC license. And that's why we're looking to, to apply for a temporary tower. Now, we are, we, at this point, we're only looking for a temporary tower because we simply don't have time to go out and find a permanent site. Finding a permanent solution or, or site is a pretty difficult and lengthy process. We anticipate that takes somewhere in the neighborhood of a year to accomplish because we have to go out, we have to do a leasing process, we have to do an engineering process, we have to do plans, zoning. So we're, we're asking for this temporary site while we work on a, a permanent solution. Now, having said that, I'd like to take a couple minutes and run down through our site plan, and that'll do a pretty good job explaining exactly, exactly what we're looking at and where we're looking at it. First of all, I mentioned that our site is down in the, the Costco parking lot, and I believe the address is three eleven Daniel Webster Highway. And you're all familiar with that area down there. This is a very important site for us because of that area. That area, which is our service area that I'm discussing now, entails Daniel Webster Highway, we've got the Pheasant Lane Mall, we've got Route Three. And I, I believe in our radio frequency report, Keith Valante indicated that there's something in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand vehicles that, that, that are meandering around that area per day, plus all the businesses and residences in that area. So this is a very important site for us, and it's very important that we keep operating there while we find a permanent solution. Now, our site plan, first, I'd like to direct you to an overall view of our, our area. We are looking at a, a site. The address is L. Silver Drive. What it is, is it's an existing parking lot. It's approximately eighty feet wide by about a hundred and forty feet long. It's, it's currently used for expansion parking for Honey Baked Ham and Louis Louis Restaurant. And I, I suppose I'll just take a second to give you a, a couple of references as to what the character of this neighborhood is. Our site is indicated right in the middle. Due north, we've got a Longhorn Restaurant. To the northeast, we've got a, I believe that's a large furniture store. Due east, the abutting property is McDonald's. And then southeast, we've got Louis Louis Restaurant. Due south, we've got Honey Baked Ham. And to the, the west, we've got an apartment complex. The next page is a, a close-up of the page I just showed you. And I, I think a, a pretty important thing about this page is, I wanted to, to talk about, you know, some of the existing foliage of our proposed site. And you'll see specifically to the, to the west, well, actually encompassing the entire parking lot or, or our site, we've got some existing foliage. Lot of these trees, we've estimated that they're somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-five to sixty feet tall. And I'm pointing that out because I, I know that one of the criteria for approval is how this assimilates with the neighborhood. And I just wanted to point out that, that we do have a pretty, pretty significant buffering situation here for us. Next page is, is a little, a little more detail on, on what our site is. You'll see that here, we've, we've indicated where the asphalted parking lot is. We are leasing a fifty by fifty-foot area, and within that fifty by fifty foot, fifty by fifty-foot space, we are going to put a thirty by thirty-foot construction fencing, and inside that, we're going to place our one hundred and thirty-foot tall tower. And our radio equipment is going to be encompassed in a truck that we're going to park there. So, so I think that's important. I'm going to skip ahead two pages to a, a real drill down on this site that shows, and by the way, I'm on page C, three A. This shows a real close-up of our proposed equipment. And, and you'll see that, that the site, the two main pieces of our equipment is that big cylindrical thing that's shown on this page, that's the base of our, our tower. Now, the, the nice thing about this temporary site is it really is a temporary site where we're just going to drop this piece of equipment off a truck. Specifically, this cylindrical, piece right here is the base of the tower. And it's called a ballast mount. And what it is, is a twenty-foot diameter, what it looks like is an above-ground pool. It's got some steel size, and we simply fill that up with sand. And that, that ballast the tower down is a base, and then we've got the one hundred and thirty-foot tower in the middle of that. The other main component to our, our, our site here is you'll see that there's a truck parked there. And I just mentioned that all of our equipment is going to be inside of the truck. So, not to be repetitive, but, you know, in, in terms of the temporary site here, we indeed just sit this on top of the existing asphalt. We don't have any grating, any cutting, any bulldozing or anything. We drop it in. And, and I apologize, I might have skipped over this when I started, but we're looking to ask for our, our permit for, for one year.
Twelve to eighteen months.
Excuse me, Ken?
Twelve to eighteen months.
Twelve to eighteen months, okay. And so we're looking for our temporary permit for twelve to eighteen months. The next page on C four is pretty similar to the page we were just on, but I, I did want to point out, in the upper right-hand corner, there's a, there's a little picture up there that shows the existing conditions of the site. And I think that's important because I did mention the existing foliage up there. And I know that's an important criteria for you, again, you know, how this is going to assimilate into the neighborhood. And you'll see, off to the left, where, where this, this site borders on the, the apartment complex, you'll see that's where the tallest tree stand is. And again, I had mentioned that we estimated that's fifty-five to sixty feet tall. On the right, you'll see that there are some trees and foliage. That's on the, the McDonald's border. I, I'm not sure that, you know, that's going to be much of an impact on, on McDonald's and, and Daniel Webster Highway, considering that is a commercial area over there. The next page, C five, is really our mechanical page. You'll see on the far left, that, that's the diagram of the entire, the entire equipment schemata there. You'll see that there's the one hundred and thirty-foot tall tower. You'll see at the base, there's that ballast, I'm calling it a ballast mount, twenty-foot diameter fixture down there. You'll also see that there's our, our truck parked right there with the radio equipment. We've also shown our six-foot tall construction fence. And the other component that, that I'm sorry if I skipped over in, in the previous pages, but as far as power and utilities concerned, there's a, there's an existing power pole right there. And we've picked this location because we can actually park our truck something in the neighborhood of fifteen feet away from that existing power pole. So we're just going to do a, a power drop from that existing power pole. And again, as I mentioned, there's going to be no, no running utilities underground or asphalt cuts or having to drop any more poles. Everything's right there for us to use. Again, it truly is a temporary site. That's the, that's the, the basis of, of our plan. And in addition to our site plan, there were two other items that I'd like to highlight that we were asked to, to submit. First of all, we're also required to submit a, a radio frequency report. And that's a, that's a nineteen-page document. I, I, I'm just going to cut to the chase and just read two main sentences out of the summary on page eight. And here it is. "Installing the proposed temporary wireless communications facility on L. Silver Drive at an antenna centerline height of a hundred and twenty-five feet will replace coverage and capacity needed in the targeted coverage areas, including key roadways such as Route Three, Daniel Webster Highway, the Pheasant Lane Mall, and the surrounding roads, neighborhoods, business retail areas in the proximity of the proposed site." Last part. "Without the installation of the proposed site, U.S. Cellular will be unable to maintain their existing 4G LTE wireless communication service in this busy area of Nashua. Therefore, United States respectfully request to act favorably on this proposed temporary facility." The other important item that we were requested to submit was a balloon study. And as you know, the balloon study is a, a visual piece to, to show you pretty much what the, what the tower is going to look like from, from close proximity. We had A.D. Clum Environmental fly a one hundred and thirty-foot tall balloon in a one-half-mile area from the, the base of the tower. And in Clum Environmental found that there were five different locations that, that the tower could be clearly seen. And you'll, you'll see in that study that, that they are depicted there. First of all, while you're looking through that, I just wanted to be clear that there, there are two pictures of each location. And the first one is the actual balloons, and the second one is the, the tower itself. The, the two balloons, one's at one fifty, the highest one, just to stabilize, but the actual one hundred and thirty-foot is the second balloon. So I, I know I'm running low on time, so I'm, I'm going to skip through this. We can revisit this if you've got any questions about this. Only because I wanted to get to an important piece, we've requested two variances, and we've actually requested those as variances as a failsafe. I don't really believe that, that variances are required. I believe that those are actually waivers, only because in the Communications Ordinance, Section one ninety dash thirty-eight, under Section B standards, there's a sentence there that specifically says, and I'm quoting it right now, "The ZBA may waive the requirements of subsection C, which is location, to the extent necessary to resolve any gap in service where required by the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six." And our two waivers are specifically from this subsection Specifically, those two requests were, there's one, there's one piece here that, that states, "New freestanding communications towers shall not be located closer than one mile from any existing or approved communications tower." Now, we are going to be twenty-eight-hundred feet, give or take, from that existing tower at Costco, but the whole premise of our application is that that tower's going away. We simply want to get our tower up and running before Costco is dismantled, so we'll have a seamless operations, or seamless operation. That's our, our, our first request, and I'm calling this a waiver right now. Our, our second request is, the next, the next section in the ordinance states, "All communications towers must be located the greater of four hundred feet from all lot lines or the tower's height from all lot lines of abutting residential properties." We're asking for a waiver from that because a four-hundred-foot setback, if you do the math, four hundred feet all around a tower, you would require effectively an eight-hundred-foot by eight-hundred-foot setback. And I believe the math is that would require a fourteen-point-seven acre parcel to do this?
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half acres, yeah. And, and Ken did point out that on page C one, you'll see that there's a big circle drawn around our tower, and that depicts what the four-hundred-foot setback would be if, if, if we were forced to, to adhere to that. So, so for those two items, as, as I said, you know, the ordinance says that you can waive items in this subsection C, so I'm, I'm going to ask for a waiver. We've submitted the variance documents if, if you want to discuss, you know, the, the variance as opposed to the-
So unfortunately, the waiver is the Planning Board, not the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's strictly states the Planning Board. That's separate here in the city of Nashua. They act separately from us. So just to want to let you know, just in case.
Okay.
Okay, so it, it just clearly states that, and, and Mr. Fark here, you know, just, we were just reading that, and it clearly states the Planning Board. Mr. Fark, is, you have any comments on that?
Well, the one item about the gaps, it says, "To the extent necessary to resolve any gap in service where required by the FTA of nineteen ninety-six." So I don't have the, I don't know, I don't have the background to know if this is, if this tower is actually required by the Act. Is it just something that's desired?
Well, the nineteen ninety-six Telecom Act specifically says that municipalities can zone towers to the extent that they don't prohibit or have the prohibiting effect of coverage. So that's, that, that's the meat and potatoes of what that is saying.
Okay. Well, they would still have to apply for the variance, you know, subject to it meeting all the points of law before this board. I mean, we have had some towers that have not been supported, and there have been some that have been, so.
Okay. Well, you, you know, we do have the, the variance documents submitted with, with our application, and-
Any questions, Mrs. McKay?
Yes. You mentioned subscribers. How many subscribers does this or will this affect? And if there is no tower, if the one goes down and the other doesn't come up, would other, like Verizon, Sprint, whoever, I, do you use or piggyback off other people's towers? Would they piggyback off yours if their subscribers were in your tower radius or area? I don't know how that works.
Right. No, and I, I did not mention subscribers, and it, it doesn't work like, you know, we can work interchangeably with the other carriers. United States Cellular, or New Hampshire Number One Rural Cellular, has a specific license from the FCC for them or us to provide service in this area. And that's the whole kit and caboodle about the nineteen ninety-six Telecom Act. That's, that's the, that's the basis for the U.S. Cellulars to operate here contingent upon, you know, the nineteen ninety-six Telecom Act. So, you know, regardless of, of what Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, anyone else is doing, that, that's, that, that's not really, you know, part of what we're doing.
Follow-up. But then this would have an adverse effect, correct, if it wasn't in existence?
It would have an adverse effect to us because that's where, that's our service area. And I didn't go through the radio free- And I didn't go through the radio frequency report document, the 19-page thing, but you'll see in the back that we've got about a half dozen radio frequency plots showing the coverage of the Costco Tower where we currently are, what would happen if that was completely gone. And it also shows what would happen if we get granted the application for our temporary site. And the real answer to what you're saying is, we go from one of our most important sites in New Hampshire, we talked about the Pheasant Lane Mall, Daniel Webster, Route 3, to zero coverage there. And again, that all just goes back to, you know, that 1996 Telecommunications Act that Carter was discussing.
So that's the adverse effect?
Indeed.
Thank you.
Mr. Lionel. My research suggested that the Costco Tower is also shared by AT&amp;T and Verizon. Is that correct? And if so, are you aware of what they're planning on doing?
We don't know what they're doing. They may have some alternate locations. They definitely have different FCC licenses, meaning that they have different operating propensities. Their frequencies are different from us, so they just have a whole different coverage perspective than we do, and we don't know what they're doing.
Okay. I wasn't sure whether you would know or not, but I did determine that at least AT&amp;T and Verizon shared that tower, so they're going to have to do something. T-Mobile doesn't, I noticed, and I didn't look at Sprint.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So talk to me about the alternative plans or what you looked at alternatively to this site.
Ken Kuzera, KJK Wireless, would like to help me out on that.
Excuse me, hold on, hold on. Just per our rules.
Yep.
Are you speaking in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're now getting to the phase where I'm going to, I've asked for people who speak in favor of the application, and this gentleman has stepped forward, so go ahead, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the record, my name is Kenneth Kuzera. I am the principal of KJK Wireless. I'm also a Nashua city resident. So the question was, what are future plans are and what research we've done. We're currently investigating three or four potential solutions. Crown Castle has suggested a solution to us. We've looked at a couple of building rooftops, and we've looked at perhaps building our own permanent tower somewhere in the area. We haven't decided on any of these things yet. This has kind of been sprung onto us by Crown Castle rather quickly. And as Mr. Gashlin mentioned, once we do make that decision, after, we have to get the temporary tower up and make sure it's functioning first so that our signal continues, then we make our decision. It's going to take us somewhere between 12 and 18 months to both lease, permit, perform all the regulatory actions, and then physically construct our new facility, wherever it may be, in that southern portion of the city. So I can't tell you what exactly we're going to do, because we don't know yet.
No, I was asking, what else have you thought about besides this lot? You must have looked?
Yes. And unfortunately, because we're on such a short window, we can't locate on any of the existing structures down there because the time required to get ourselves permanent power and fiber backhaul and to construct a facility of this type, we wouldn't be done by the time they take the tower down. So what we've done is, this temporary proposal is actually similar to what we do in emergency situations in other parts of the country. If there is a major weather event or something like that, we roll in a similar facility and boom, we have it up and it's going. We're actually, we don't have to connect to, we don't have to get a new power connection. We're able to use the power that's right there. We don't have to get a fiber connection because we're putting a microwave dish up to be able to link up with our site that's right up by Riviera College. So we've been able to make this completely temporary and removable in the future without any ground disturbance whatsoever. So once we are done and we've moved to whatever our permit solution is, this goes away and you won't even know we were there.
Okay, so again, I'm not maybe as familiar as Mr. Lionel is on this, but so you've looked basically at all the other areas in that area because I'm assuming that you're trying to be nearby where the...
Yeah, we tried to get as close to the Costco location as we could, and as you know, it's real congested down there.
So how about Tengs Row?
We can't. Unfortunately, our competitors have licenses in Massachusetts. U.S. Cellular only has licenses in New Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont. So while we're allowed to have a little bit of our signal reach into Massachusetts, we can't physically locate into Massachusetts.
Interesting. Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to, trying to just kind of, this temporary, it's kind of not...
It's outside the box.
This is completely outside the box for what we do here, because once we make, you know, once we make a decision, and if we would be favorable, it's, you know, it's not the same thing, you know? You can promise us, but once we open that door, that door can't be closed.
I don't know, for a special exception, I don't think that's the case.
Well, there's also...
We're not dealing with...
The area variances.
We're not dealing with the variances, I don't think.
Area variances.
Right, there's two area variances and a special exception.
For what? There is application, yeah. Look at the second page. Turn the pages, the area variance there. Yeah.
But couldn't a motion limit the scope and time limit?
Right, we believe you could absolutely condition us to a maximum time limit to be at that location, and then we'd have to return if, for some reason, that wasn't feasible, just like those folks came back to change the fence.
Okay. So you know when Costco is taking down that tower?
Crown Castle has informed us that their lease expires on December 15th, right? In the busiest time of year for that area. So that's why we are scrambling to get this completed and operational before December 15th, because they may say to us on December 16th, "Get all your stuff out of there."
So maybe just semantics, but when did you, when did your, you know, when did your company find out that they were going to do this?
Well, they told us two years ago that they were negotiating to extend it.
Right.
And then in October of this year, they provided us a letter saying, "The folks at Costco don't want to extend. It expires on December 15th."
So again, maybe I'm going outside the box here a little bit.
Yeah.
So, and I might be all wet. You talked about, you know, basically the Federal Trade Commission...
It's the FCC.
FCC, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Protecting, you know, or having caveats in there to make sure the service keeps going.
Yep.
Wouldn't that also extend to something like this where somebody says, "I'm just going to take the tower down, so you guys are done"?
Yeah, they don't get into private, they consider that private real estate function, just as, you know, it's Crown Castle, one of the largest tower companies in the country and the world, but it's no different than if you were our landlord. They don't get involved in private elements like that. Costco has the right, since the lease is running out, to not let us, to not let Crown Castle stay.
Yeah, it sounds kind of one way.
Uh, it is. That's why we're scrambling.
Yeah, the FTC that he was referring to puts limits on municipalities.
Correct.
For, you know, we can't say, for example, "No, we don't want any cellular towers anywhere in the city. We're not allowed to do that." But, you know, as long as we have rules that allow them in certain places, then that's okay. But, you know, as it says in the code, the planning board can waive some of those requirements, but the special exception is up to us.
All right, so how much noise is this, is our utility truck going to generate?
The utility truck, the interior is air-conditioned, just like our equipment shelter is air-conditioned at Costco. So, you know, it'll occasionally turn on or turn off if the temperature goes within the range, but it's no louder than your standard air conditioner at home.
Right, so, you know, you're talking about direct hook-up to power and the...
Yeah, and by the way, the air conditioners are facing towards McDonald's.
Okay. And there's no backup generators that run a certain...
There is a generator on the truck, but we have no reason to deploy it unless the power goes out.
Okay. Because we got...
And in that area of the city, if the power goes out, it's going to be coming back pretty quick.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for...
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Come on up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Icapino. I'm a lawyer from Manchester, New Hampshire. I am here appearing on behalf of PRA Properties LP. They own the pheasant-run apartments, 341 apartment units that are butters to this property behind McDonald's. There are over 600 residents that live in those apartments, and we're here to oppose this. But first, I do have a question. I don't know if this board knows the answer, but has this applicant filed a citywide location map of anticipated locations in the past? It's required by your ordinance 19038, that each applicant should file a citywide tower and antenna location plan. That's filed with the planning board, but I didn't know if you might know if one had been filed by this application, by this applicant.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman? If you'd like.
Well, you'll, per our procedures, you'll have an opportunity to come back to rebut any testimony that you hear.
Secondly, to the extent that this applicant is seeking what it now claims is a waiver, we object and would point out, we received no notice that they were here to request a waiver under 19038 here today. The only notice we received was of a special exception and then two variances with respect to the special exception, which is unusual enough in and of itself for this, for, at any zoning board of adjustment.
But I don't think that we're considering any waivers. No waivers are being considered this evening.
Special exception for the use and the setback and the height variant. The setback variance and the variance within a mile of another tower. So the zoning board doesn't really grant waivers. That's the planning board's function, if they get to that board.
Thank you. On the law, this application just does not make it. It does not serve the public interest. The public interest in zoning for these types of towers is at least twofold, if not more, but most important for public safety, because these towers do fail, they do get fires. That's why your special exception requires a 400-foot setback. The setback that they're seeking here is substantially less than 400 feet, it's 28 feet. And they failed to, they failed to demonstrate to you that there would be substantial justice served by this. You have before you a viewshed analysis done from everywhere but from the back of the McDonald's, where 600 residents of your city live. There's no viewshed analysis back there. The balloons were not photographed from there. They assert that it's because it's on private property, but nobody even asked my client if they could do that. And I would point out that these apartments go up, the elevation goes up behind there, and these apartments will be looking directly at this tower regardless of the height of the trees. In addition, there are parking lots and a tennis court that are right in the fall zone, where if this tower were to fall, the tower would fall into that area. Children play there, obviously adults play there, and cars and other valuable property of residents of Nashua are stored in those parking lots. Finally, there is simply no hardship. They're telling you this is a temporary issue. There is no such thing as a temporary hardship. Hardship is defined under our statute, and it's defined to, basically to be about the land and about the nature of the land. And I respectfully suggest to you that there is no adequate hardship asserted here because there's nothing about, what they've said, what they say is they have a business problem. That's not a problem that goes to whether or not this lot, where they want to construct this property, suffers a hardship. In fact, the rationale of your special exception, requiring the 400-feet setback and requiring that they not be within a mile of another tower, those go precisely to the reason for the ordinance. This is not a situation where there's not a fit and that the ordinance is not designed to, or does not reasonably protect. This is in fact a situation where there is no hardship, and that would be a reason to deny both of the variances as well.
Sir, I don't mean to cut you off, but your time was up. I could give you a little minute?
No, actually, there, also Jeff Brown, in-house counsel for my client, as well as the property manager, are here to speak about the specific impacts on the property as well.
Before you go...
Yes, sir.
Any questions, this gentleman? No. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. So just, so you know, if you come up together, your time is five minutes, just for both of you.
That's fine.
If you want to split that up, use your time however you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we'll need more. Counsel has covered some of the issues. My name is Jeff Brown. I'm general counsel for Princeton Properties. Princeton Properties is a New England-based company that owns and manages and operates apartment communities all throughout New England. We're about 7,500 apartments from Thalmouth, Maine to Worcester. We are the owners of PRA...
PVA?
PRA Limited. We have another PVA. PRA, Pheasant Run. We're, as Counsel mentioned, we have about, we have 341 units. We have about 600 residents that live there. So I'd like to focus on one issue in particular, because I know it's a factor, as you consider this application and other applications that we've heard this evening, which is, how does this application affect the neighborhood? How does it blend with the neighborhood? And so I'd really like to just focus my time on that. Heather Libby, our property manager, is here as well. Heather was our property manager for nine years on the site and lived there for 13 years. So Heather has literally lived all these impacts that we're going to talk about in a minute. And if you don't mind, I have, the application is thick, and I called out three documents that I think might focus in on my presentation.
Thank you.
So as was mentioned, as you can see from the first diagram, I think what's critical to be aware of here is the significant elevation changes that occur as you come northerly up Silver Drive. In all, in essence, the project site where they're proposing this cell tower is at the base of a hill. As you come up Silver Drive, it then ascends quite steeply up into our apartment area and continues to ascend up even more steeply to the top of this hill. So there is significant grade changes between where this property is located and where, you can see, I've checked off our various apartments. And I think the most notable example is that the gentleman from Cellular, Juan, mentioned that things would be okay because there's 60-foot trees and we'd have plenty of buffer and really not see this cell tower. Our estimation is the trees are 30 to 40 feet high. Regardless, I think it's irrelevant based on Heather's eyewitness testimony. The residents in those upper buildings, as you can see, from the very first set that comes there to the very back, look down on those trees. They see the top of those trees. They see the top of the McDonald's buildings. They look down onto the Daniel Webster Highway. They look down onto the Daniel Webster Highway. They look down on the tops of buildings on the other side of the Daniel Webster Highway. So, the foliage that's supposed to be the buffer that is the great solvent here is a non-factor at all. It will block nothing. These, the proposed tower is 130 feet in height. This will be in direct sightline to all the residents in those buildings, as you can see, as it goes up that hill, up that hill, and up that hill. So, it'll have a significant impact on us. These are renters. We rent to young families. And so, the attractiveness of the site, visual and aesthetics, is always a critical factor. And having to look out at a cell tower is going to be a dramatic impact on us. It's going to affect our ability to attract and retain renters. And it's temporary or not, we're going to be staring at a cell tower. Additionally, as was mentioned, directly adjacent to where the cell tower is going to be located is a tennis court, which our residents use. Kids play down there. Also, to the left is a structure as you enter into the property. And again, all of those are going to be impacted by a direct sightline view of this cell tower. What I find curious is the applicant has submitted all kinds of pictures of balloons showing what you would see at various levels throughout a half-mile radius. I think there's over 10 pictures of different balloons. Remarkably, we're 20 feet away. There's not a single balloon, there's not a single picture taken of a balloon from our perspective of the view of this cell tower. So, it, what you're seeing from the ground level of the Daniel Webster Highway has no, it's not indicative at all as to what we will see. This cell tower will be directly in the sightline. All of our buildings are three stories. Best guess is our second and third stories will be looking directly at the face of, of this, of this cell tower. Had they been, had we been asked, we would gladly had them on the property. I've, I've permitted properties all throughout New England. I don't think there's ever been a case where I didn't go to my butters and say, "What's going to be your impact? Let's work them out." Yet, we never were contacted until Friday. On Friday afternoon, we received an abutter notice. That's the first we ever heard of, of this project.
So, your time's up, sir.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Just trying to follow rules.
I think that's really it. Essentially, the issue to us is-
You just said something, I just want to make sure that we're okay. You said you received a butter notice when?
Friday afternoon.
This past Friday?
Friday af, yes. The eight, seventh? Whatever Friday was. This Friday is when we received an abutter notice. That's the first notice we ever received of this project in any fashion. No one contacted us. No one asked if they could come on our property, take some measurements, float some balloons, take some pictures.
Just hold on for a minute. Mr. Park, I just want to make sure that we've followed all our rules.
We always follow our rules with, with notification and the signs. We don't have any control over the U.S. mail, of how fast things get delivered or when people are available to pick it up. We also notified all the towns within a 20-mile radius as required by the law.
So, butternoses get sent out when?
Yeah, they'll get sent out, I believe it's 10 days prior to the meeting. By the time they get them, they may be earlier.
Okay.
And depending on holidays or the U.S. mail schedule, I mean, we don't have any control over that.
Just wanted you to be assured that, you know, unfortunately, you know, whatever reason you can get it, but we take, spend a lot of time to make sure that we follow through with that.
I've been through many of butternose situations.
Maybe something happened differently.
Yep. It was just, it just presented a difficulty to us to have Mike run around and do all the legal research in a matter of days and for us to assemble what is, what is a major project and a major impact in a very short period of time.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none. The applicant has five minutes to come back. The applicant, unfortunately, was you, sir. So, you have to speak per our rules. So, you have five minutes if you'd like, or you could rest. It's up to you.
I'd like to speak, but I would like to invite Ken up to, to assist me as Ken's technical knowledge is, is pretty relevant to this.
Hold on for a second. We'll have to take a vote on that, if you want to entertain that or not.
I, no problem with that.
Neither do I.
All right. So, I'll make a motion to accept, what's your last name, sir?
Cazaro.
Mr. Cazaro, to join the applicant? Because this goes, this is not normal for our rules. So, I'm going to make a motion to, to have Mr. Cazaro come up.
Second.
Ms. McKay is seconded. All in favor, three, three to nothing.
Thank you.
Right. I will. We will offer the same courtesy to the, to the, to the opposer of this, if they come up.
Fair enough. Fair enough. So, the attorney asked about the citywide tower plan. In the RF report, we have detailed all of the facilities that U.S. Cellular has within the city. Keith, do you know what page it is?
This is obviously a lot larger, easier read than those eight and a half by elevens, but it shows all of our facilities that are active on our LTE network in the city.
Does, do people who oppose have this application, this?
It is in the, in the packet.
Do you have this?
Online.
You have this?
I believe so.
Okay. Just want to make sure you have this information. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure you have it. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Sorry.
Sure. The other element that they discussed was the 400-foot setback. The 400-foot setback, we would argue, is arbitrary and capricious. It doesn't serve any purpose. I don't believe any of the towers in the city of Nashua could meet that. This was in, this was not in place the last time we permitted a tower in 2011, which, for the record, was at 129 Ridge Road, which is directly across the street from my residence. And that one couldn't have made it. The Costco Tower couldn't make it. We don't really know where the setback came from or what purpose it serves because, as we showed earlier, it takes up 11 and a half acres of property, which in a city that is more than 90% built, like the city of Nashua, those properties really don't exist. So, we don't know how it was entered into the ordinance after 2011 and what purpose it served. The viewshed analysis, when we do viewshed analysis, and we've done hundreds, if not thousands of them, we do not go on private property. For the specific reason of, we don't want our consultants going on to someone else's private property and having something happen to them, positive or negative. We don't want them to get hurt on someone else's property, and we don't want them to do any damage to that property while they're doing their work. And the fall zone was mentioned. These towers don't fall like a tree. They typically fail at a midpoint. The 130-foot monopole is made up of three different pieces of steel that are set on top of each other and overlap. If anything were to fail on it, those pieces would, it would fail at one of those three points and would cantilever over. That's what typically happens if there is a substantial failure. And lastly, just want to let you folks know that the diameter of the tower at the top is 18 inches of steel, and it's approximately four to five feet diameter of the antennas. So, we're not talking about a typical tower where they are typically 15 feet wide on a triangular top. This is significantly smaller. We tried to make it as small as humanly possible and still be able to operate the network because we knew it was going to have visual impact somewhere within the area of service. It's just a matter of fact. I mean, these things aren't invisible. We can't make them invisible. But we have done everything we can engineering-wise to make it still work for U.S. Cellular and to minimize any intrusion that we would have with this temporary facility. Any questions?
So, just want to revisit, and I don't know what, where we were at that time. Are there any regulations that are compelling us? I'm just talking in general, compelling us to approve this tower or this location?
Absolutely. The FCC has mandated in the Telecommunications Act that we, that you as a board may zone, but you have to allow us to fill our substantial coverage gaps as best we can do to cover that and to meet your ordinance, which, as we've explained both in the RF report and in our verbal testimony, if this existing Costco facility goes away, we're going to have a substantial gap over several miles in the busiest part of the city of Nashua, and it's going to affect thousands of people on a daily basis.
So, anyway, just, just bear with me, right?
Sure.
Because I just, I just want to just dig a little deeper. I, I guess I'm going to take your word for that, and I'm not going to ask to see it or read it or whatever. I'm just going to take your word for that.
Sure.
So, with that, though, this is where I'm kind of trying to understand, or I'm trying to say to myself, "Well, where else?" And I asked you this early, I never really, maybe I got an answer, but I was more drilling to like, "So, I get this location because it's near Costco, it's near Costco, and there's power there." But I can probably point to you several large parking lots in the area that don't get a lot of cars parked there, that have power poles nearby. I, I see a lot of stuff. So, what I didn't hear was, "Hey, we went here, we went there, we went there, we went there."
Yeah.
And I didn't hear that. And, you know, that we were completely refused all this access everywhere we went.
No, we reviewed, Mr. Gashlin and myself and several engineers with U.S. Cellular, reviewed every single parcel in that southern portion, portion of Nashua, focused on three or four of them, which we contacted the owners, and this was the only interested party that we could find.
Okay.
And that was only part of it, you know, finding an interested party. The other thing was, this, we thought, was substantially better than some of the other ones because, other than sitting in the middle of a parking lot, in the middle of traffic, where it might present a hazard, it was off, away from everything else. It had substantial tree growth around it to buffer it from everything else around it. It was a win-win.
Okay. So, just let me ask you this.
Sure.
Just because of the way I work. If this landowner said no, and you were left with nothing, so nobody, what was your plan from that point?
We didn't have a plan B.
So, okay, so, and then, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be pushing anything.
Understood.
I'm just trying to understand your thought process and where, where things go for a business like this. So, at that point, the, what's at stake is the 4G service.
Yes.
Right? So, does it 4G go away completely, or is it Sparty? Or how, what, what really happens that? And I'm not a techie, I'm not a phone guy.
Sure. Keith? Oh, there's a label. Okay. All right. So, labels are up on top. I couldn't see them when I first looked at. This is what our coverage looks like today. And the existing area, as you can see, is green, which means we have adequate in-building, in-vehicle coverage-
Right.
-for our customers. You take it away, you go to the next page. Costco goes away, and people will be, be able to make phone calls in a couple of spots, but there's very little green. It's almost all white and yellow.
I'm sorry. You need to take the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Complete.
Yep. Me too. It's on the roll. So, the existing coverage from Costco, as you can see, green is good. In a perfect world, if we were in Kansas where it's all flat, everything would be green, but you know how that is. We have topography and hills, valleys, and trees. So, that's what it looks like today for our customers. Costco goes away, that's what it looks like. Huge gap. So, then, we put up the temporary, and look at that. It fills in almost everything. There's still some areas outlying and over in Hudson and to the west because of the hill. BAE also, we believe, blocks RF transmissions.
So, let me just go a little further.
Sure.
So, I got to assume that people who live south of the border have U.S. Cellular, right?
People who live south of the border do not. We don't have licenses down there. We can't sell phones down there. I, I assume they could buy one in New Hampshire and travel to Massachusetts if they wanted to.
I hope it was just other folks providing service down there that you're not, that we don't see an overlay of-
Right. We don't, we don't show you any of our competitors because we're not privy to their information. This is U.S. Cellular.
And, and so, you're saying U.S. Cellular is not in Massachusetts?
That's correct, sir. That's why you see all this white. You see a little bit of the coverage extend into that area.
If it was Massachusetts, we wouldn't probably be having this conversation.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Per our rules, we're going to offer you the same latitude that we did with the applicant. And if you want to come up as a group and speak in rebuttal to what you heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one-
Listen to the mic. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
They're going to make the camera guy happy.
Okay. I, I have one response to the applicant. The applicant has, again, invoked the Federal Telecommunications Act. Nashua has dealt with that. You've dealt with that by providing areas in your city where telecommunications towers can be erected. In fact, you permit them by special exception in every district, I believe, if, if my reading of Table 15 is correct. So, I don't think you have to worry about whether or not the Telecommunications Act requires you to do anything here. You're doing it by, by providing them with the, with the benefit of a special exception if they can meet the requirements of it. And if you choose to believe that, that a variance from a special exception is appropriate by considering those requests for a variance. So, you're doing what the Federal Telecommunications Act requires you to do in, in considering this right now. I, I think our request is going to be to you to please deny this application. If you're not inclined to deny it, we would ask that you table it and require your applicant to come and provide a viewshed analysis from our properties in, so that you can be fully informed, and then, maybe substantial justice could be accomplished.
One quick point.
Just say your name, just so, you know.
Jeff Brown, Princeton Properties. The gentleman mentioned that he felt the 400-foot setback was arbitrary and capricious. Obviously, it's a provision of your ordinance that has to do with public safety. It's not arbitrary. And I think a telling point is in their submission, and it's the second page of the documents that I handed out to you, is there's a map, and they draw a circle, which they describe as the fall zone. And that circle is apparently what would happen if this cell tower were to topple. Does it topple at the half or midpoint? I don't know. I'm not a mechanical engineer. But for us, the impact is, as you can see from that map, it would wipe out our tennis court where our residents play and enjoy. It would wipe out two of our most congested parking lots. And it would wipe out the front part of our building number two, which has decks along the front side of it according to their fall zone map. So, the 400 feet is critical to us from a public safety standpoint, and I believe another reason to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. McKay? No? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Just take a few minutes if you want to review some stuff.
Well, okay, I, I'm going to start.
You have enough time, Mr. Lino?
Hmm?
You have enough time?
I had, yeah, I got enough time. The... I haven't seen the term "fall zone" on this, uh, map that's also in the, uh, objectors list, maybe it's here somewhere, but I, I haven't spotted the, those words yet, so. Obviously, the applicant had very little time as, in the normal course of, compared to the normal course of things, to come up with a plan, uh, to provide temporary service for their customers. The, I think the issue about the, the sighting of, of, you know, being able to see the cell tower from various places, I mean, the photographs provided show that you could see that tower from all over the southern part of the city, um, some more than others, but to me, that's, that's sort of a distraction from, from what we're being asked to do. If there was, this was a permanent site, then the, things would be really very different, in, in my view. But it's a temporary site, um, no more than 18 months, uh, and, uh, it's a lesser impact than a permanent tower would be. I understand the objections of the, the apartment property owners, um, you know, it's similar to the objections of people all, everywhere, when a cell tower gets put near their property. But, you know, the, the federal, uh, rules kind of make it hard to, for, um, communities to, to really say no, especially in cases such as this where, um, there is going to be a gap in coverage, they're licensed for it, um, they are going to be looking for a place somewhere in the city where they can build a permanent tower that meets all of the requirements, and I'm sure the neighbors of that will object too. I, uh, my inclination is to, uh, vote in favor of this request.
Ms. McKay?
I concur. It's an emergent situation, as you pointed out, Mr. Lino, they had no time, from October to now, they had no time. They're told, you need to fix it, you need to fix it now, or they lose coverage, and at 18 inches in diameter at the top, that seems to be pretty small. I don't know how conspicuous this would be. I realize that you will see it from anywhere in that general area, but it gives them time to look, it's temporary, it could be conditioned within a motion to time limit and state that it was an emergency, not a typical situation. And, in my humble opinion, they have no place else to go and nothing to do. I, I think that it's for the greater good, and so I would support this application.
I'm having a hard time with this. And, and there's nothing to do with, uh, the applicant doing their due diligence and doing what they need to do. And I, I heard what the, um, the abutters had to say. I, I'm just not con, I'm not, not that I'm not convinced, I'm sure that they went and looked some properties, I don't know how creative that was. What I'm saying, I don't, you know, I, I don't know, you know, I, this, to be, whatever, seems a little much for here. I don't know, you know, how do we, you know, how hard do we measure the safety? One of the things is the safety of the people who live nearby, right? So, um, I understand the construction of the tower, you know, with the whole thing topple over and go straight down, I, hopefully that the stuff is constructed in a safe way. I'm just, you know, I'm just concerned for the neighborhood that, what's there now. I understand the coverage, but, Mr. Lino, you know, the, the testimony was is that if there's no tower, there's no coverage, there's no coverage at all? So, or is there minimal, or can you, you can't use your, you can't use your device, or it's just not at a high speed?
Well, it, it depends, um, and maybe I, I don't fully understand this, but they have, they're licensed on, on an 850-megahertz band, different, different cellular companies are licensed on different bands.
Right.
And, um, what would likely happen is that their customers in that area would find calls dropped, um, they would, you know, as they're moving around, you know, they might get a little coverage in, you know, one bar or something someplace, and then no bars if they move somewhere else, or especially if they're inside buildings, uh, compared to what they've got now. I don't know, I mean, that's a, this company is one that I'm, I'm not as familiar with their, their system as, as I am with some of the others. According to the RF plan that we have here, uh, let's see if I got this right. It seems that they only have, they're only talking about 850-megahertz LTE if they, it's, I'm assuming that means they have no 3G coverage on a different band. And even if they did, it might, it probably would be, uh, not usable in that area without the Costco tower. So, uh, you know, they, they, other, other companies, transmitters elsewhere in the city that wouldn't be usable, I mean, if you're, they have to, a customer has to be within a reasonable range of a tower that's broadcasting their service.
Okay.
As I said before, you know, if this was a, a permanent tower application, I would say, no, this is not the right place for it for many other reasons, but for a temporary one...
Yeah, and, and, you know, 18 months may not sound like a lot to some people, but I think it's a lot in some other respects, and, you know, um, if, if I were to even, at this point, consider, I just, I, I want to make sure that there's, you know, first of all, we're going to get some type of language in there. Just, if you don't mind, Mr. Fock, um, do you see any hazards in, in any motions that we make that you would see that would cause a problem in the future for the site, as far as what we are approving or not, and whether or not it would open the door for some other things, or?
I mean, just, just for the tower or anything else?
But, just for the tower.
Well, the applicant mentioned an 18-month time limit. Should the board put forth a motion to approve it, you could put in a stipulation that it would have to be, um, deconstructed after 18 months? They can always come back and apply for more, just like the people did with the fence.
Yeah.
It's possible. I know they, I know they want this to be a temporary location and are looking for, or a permanent location, but I know that area is pretty busy and pretty well-developed, and, uh, they may not have all the options that they, they want. Otherwise, they won't find one.
Right.
So. I don't know if that really answered your question, but they, the site plan for Louis Louis, which is, you know, the owner of the restaurant, they own this parking lot, so that site plan would have to be amended as well, because they'll be reducing their required parking by, uh, was it eight or 10 spaces, so?
So, um, in general, making a motion to approve, would we run afoul of another, would we create another issue on a site plan for another business, and by approving this, does it create a problem where we're forcing something to happen before? So, if that's the case, and if we know about this, should the site plan be looked at first for Louis, to make sure that they were amended, or?
Staff has looked at the site plan for Louis Louis, and the parking requirements, when they were approved, uh, was a little different back then. They would have enough spaces, I think, just, or either that or they'd be just one or two spaces short, they would have to apply for, um, um, a waiver if they're short a couple of spaces. That's something the planning board does have the authority to do.
Okay.
So. But they would, you know, should this be supported, it would have to go to the planning board because it's...
So we're not talking a 20%, 25% reduction in parking that we create this problem, we're talking a few spaces?
I believe it was just a couple of spaces at the most, and they could, they could apply for a waiver.
All right.
I don't remember the exact numbers, but.
Okay.
It was just two spaces, one or two.
Okay. I don't know where I'm going to fall, but, um, I want to do the, I, I want to provide the applicant with what they need, uh, but I definitely, I'm hearing the abutters and the concern, so I definitely would, you know, what, um, could agree with some language whoever makes the motion, because I won't make that, I'm not going to make the motion. But I would, you know, let's talk about a timeframe, and, and I, I'm thinking, I don't want, I want this to be a very short time, because I think that, um, that, you know, they could achieve and do what they need to do, knowing right now, today, right, what's, we're up again, so, um, I, I won't get into the number of months, but I, but I would say that at the end of 18 months, I wouldn't want to see anything in that parking lot for me to even approve that. I'd want every semblance of that gone. And, you know, again, I'm just concerned for safety as, 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 hopefully, as, as, hopefully that nothing would happen, but again, what, what, what would, what would happen that went towards the tentacle, if it would have failed? And I don't know how often these things fail.
They don't tend to.
Yeah, and, and he, you know, he did mention that it does fail at the, at the sections, right, at the, at the third section, so, um, so what do you feel about the, the folks that, you know, you're both in favor, what do you feel about having a specific timeframe and making sure that that's deconstructed?
I would, I would think we would have to do that, I mean, I, I wouldn't approve it if we didn't have that, if it didn't have a stipulation in there.
It's such a, a limited time. This is, the scope is limited, this is not something that we generally do, this is a paradigm shift, and so because of that, I think we need to button it as tight as we can so that it won't, um, encourage this to happen again. I understand, this is an emergency, I don't think they would be here if they were told two years ago.
And, and so, and, and you heard me discuss this with the applicant, again, my feelings are, and, and, and he said it's a one-way street, that, you know, and I'm taking that for face value, and that's what the applicant's saying, I'm going to take that for what he said. I just, I, I'm really struggling with that, because, again, you know, I, I understand this, this private property rights and all that, um, but I just find it odd that in one side we can compel, almost, I don't know if that's the right word, but then from the other point of view, it's like, you're all done, see you bye, right? Take your equipment off, you're all done.
Well, yeah, that's right, the, the federal law, um, puts requirements on municipalities, on Nashua, the city of Nashua, um, doesn't say anything about private property, it's up to the, the tower operators to find some, some landowner who's willing to lease or sell them the property to put up the tower, and then, um, it's up to, you know, the city to make sure that the regulations are fulfilled, um, for where that tower is sighted and, and what it looks like, and, you know, how it's constructed, and whatever's in the, in the ordinances. So, you know, the, there's nothing that prevents the Costco from saying, we don't want that tower on our parking lot anymore, goodbye. You know, that's their decision to make.
Nothing to do with this case, right? But, you know, we're putting, you put a timeframe on that, but I guess I just wouldn't want to see a bunch of temporary towers coming, right? Because there's an issue with the tower, and all of a sudden, you know, we get all this.
Well, you, with, this might happen again somewhere, and, and, you know, my initial question was, I said, AT&amp;T Verizon also used that tower at Costco. What are they going to do? I, I don't know, may, maybe they have, uh, sufficient, uh, limited coverage elsewhere, maybe they're looking for a tower elsewhere? We don't know, we haven't seen any application from them. But that's not before us today, so it's...
No, I understand, I understand.
Who knows?
Okay. I'll just state on record that, you know, again, I'm, I have concerns, um, with the neighborhood, with the character of the neighborhood, with the, with, I do understand, I, I'm completely sympathetic to the abutters, and I understand what, what the applicant's looking for.
I think we all are.
Yeah. So I just, I'm just, just, you know, just wanted to say that, I'm, it's very difficult for me, this, this is one's difficult for me. But if you'd like to make a motion.
Sure. Okay, I think I'm going to need some help.
You're going to do the, um...
wording of the stipulation.
Special exception first.
Yeah, we'll do the special exception first.
Yeah.
Um, and we're, you know, there will be a special condition, so let's, let's, we'll get down to that, and then we'll come up with a special condition, all right. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of SavCam LLC, applicant is New Hampshire, number one Rural Cellular Inc., address is L. Silver Drive, Sheet A Lot 993, requesting the following. Would you do the special exception first? Special exception from Land Use Code Section 19015, Table 15-1, Item 276, to construct a 130-foot-tall monopole communications tower with an associated service truck containing radio equipment, uh, uh, and this is in the GB Zone, Ward 7. This is listed in the table of uses, uh, with a special exception being required. The board does not believe it will create undue chat, traffic congestion, or impair pedestrian safety because there will be no pedestrians around it, there's, uh, sufficient fencing. We have testimony that it will not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal systems, in fact, it won't be connected to any of those systems. The special regulations, uh, I think, don't know if, that there are any, are fulfilled, we're none attached here. Given that this is a temporary, uh, sighting, the board believes that it will not permanently impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be permanently detrimental to the health morals or welfare of residents. We understand that, um, there will be some temporary, uh, visual disturbance, um, and, but we believe that, uh, the need for the, the tower, a temporary tower overrides that. So, special condition. Special condition will be that, um, at the end of 18 months after this, uh, exception is granted, that all of the equipment and, and that has been, had been placed there will be removed, and the site will be restored to the way it looks today. Does that sound reasonable?
We can have a discussion after you're done, making a motion.
Okay, all right, so, uh, with that, I will make a motion to approve the special exception.
Seconded by Mr. McKay, discussion.
Discussion.
Just, um, so, there's a process in place, right? So that 18 months, the clock would start ticking, um, after, would start ticking after the approval of the application, but, um, if there was, um, if it's just say there was a, there was a, um, somebody came forth and, um, decided to challenge this, right? Right, that, again, we would go to the 18 months, right, from when?
I have no experience wording these, so I, I need help with this.
There's a lot of dates here, I mean, rehearing, anyone could ask for a rehearing or an appeal starting tomorrow as day one, and they would have 30 days to... or an appeal, starting tomorrow is day one, and they would have thirty days to do that. Even though this is approved by this board, or if there's a motion to approve this by this board, it would still have to go to the planning board as well, and I'm not sure when you guys would be planning on going, if it even be this year, because there's only one planning board meeting in December, and I don't know if they've scheduled for November, so...
Well, we could say eighteen months after final approval by...
I'm thinking final approval, but they said Costco's taking that down, twelve fifteen nineteen.
So, I mean, technically, they can't do anything until they go in front of the planning board.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I don't think it's going, I don't know, you could, help me out, I don't know if you guys are planning on going in November.
We applied for the November twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two, whatever it is.
Okay, so...
Twenty-one.
So, so just wanna word this, so that...
Maybe a hundred and eighty days after a planning board.
Final planning board approval. I, I just wanna make sure that that's, you know, what, that's just kinda worded in there, because if we say to our approval, it could be ours, right? And, and listen, I would rather the time be shorter, but, again, just being fair, and being open and honest and transparent, right? We have to say when exactly the hundred and eighty days, on the eighteen months.
Fifteen months.
Yeah, the eighteen months starts from, so it's not necessarily our approval.
Okay, it's from, from a planning board approval, if, if it gets approved, obviously.
From final planning board approval.
Final planning, or it becomes effective thirty days after final day approval?
So we'll say final planning board approval. If there are any challenges, and it's not successful, then that, if it's a challenge, and then they, you know, whatever, I, you know, again, everything is stayed, right, until, until that's, that's taken care of, right, in other venues. Okay, so I would, I would, if you don't mind, Mr. Lionel, may we word that to final planning board approval?
Okay.
I think it's, and I think our discussion is kind of clear as to where we're going with this.
Yeah. Okay.
So I would make, I would ask to amend the, your motion to final planning board approval.
Okay, so I, I agree with that, we'll amend the motion, the special condition, to say eighteen months after final planning board approval, that all equipment will be removed and the site restored to the appearance that it has today.
Present condition.
Present condition, yeah.
Present condition, yeah.
Okay. Do you resecond that, Ms. McKay?
Yes, I do.
All right, so seconded by Ms. McKay, any more discussion? All in favor? So that's three to nothing? Your application's been approved, and just be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal.
Okay.
Now, do you do the motion on the variance?
Now, I'm gonna do the motion on the variance, sorry. Do you need, do you need a moment or two?
Are you all set, Ms. McKay?
I'm ready for this.
You're ready, okay.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of SavCam LLC, owner, applicant, New Hampshire, number one Rural Cellular Inc., addresses L. Silver Drive, Sheet A, Lot 993, requesting the following variances. One, from Land Use Code Section 190-38-C1, to allow a setback of twenty-three feet eight inches to the nearest property line, four hundred feet required, and two, from Land Use Code Section 190-38-C2, to allow a tower within one mile of an existing tower, GB zone, Ward 7. The one-mile distance is to the current existing site, tower on the Costco site, which is being dismantled, and this is a temporary sighting, which will disappear in eighteen months. The board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, although there, the, there are really no special conditions of the property, other than this was the only available spot in the southern part of the city that would work for the benefit sought by the applicant, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The board believes that this is within spirit and intent of the ordinance, in favor of providing cellular coverage to residents of Nashua. The board believes it will not permanently adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, that it is not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice will be served. Do I need to put the eighteen-month special condition on this? I, the variance is on the property, so yes, I think I wanna do that. I would like to add as a special condition, the same eighteen-month special condition that was made for the special exception, so that eighteen months after final planning board approval, this area variance disappears, is revoked. Does that, does that wording sound reasonable? Mr. Falk? Because otherwise, the variance is run with the property, and I don't think we wanna do that.
Yeah, as long as it's a stipulation that's agreed on by this board, and if it's something that the applicant, you know, they...
They've already told us that's what they're doing.
Proposed it themselves, so you guys are just agreeing with them, so...
Okay.
Because normally, variances run with the land, and they don't go away.
Right, that's why I wanted to put it in here.
If the applicant has proposed a time limit that they've agreed upon, and...
If that's not sufficient to them, that's their problem.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, yeah, a second?
I can second this.
Ms. McKay, any discussion?
Yes. The only thing I want to be absolutely clear on is when you all asked if I was ready to move forward, I had everything written. I did not determine whether a motion was gonna be to approve or deny. I just had the language written on the form.
To approve.
I did write "to approve." What I'm clarifying is that I didn't, you know, I'm clarifying, there was no determination made, and it was just the language...
Yeah, or did I, I, so I didn't actually say the words, "I make a motion to approve the variance?"
No, you, you know, when I said, when you both asked, "Are you ready to move forward?" I said, "Yes, I'm ready for this. I'm ready for you to go ahead and move with your motion." The language from the law is here. The decision is, was not on the paper. That's what I wanted to be clear about.
Okay, just for, for, for your keeping of records.
For keeping of the records, so everything is open and transparent. Now, it states, the motion's been made by who, and that it, we are granting the motion.
All right, and we do have audio and video, so...
Yes, but I wanted to be...
All right, thank you.
Very clear.
All right, so the motion's on the table, Ms. McKay, you've seconded it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's three to nothing. Now, your complete application's been approved, and again, be aware, that thirty-day window of appeal. All right, thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number eight.
Do we need to take a break?
I'm so cold, but no, it's fine, I'll move ahead.
I'd like to open the public meeting, the public hearing, for case number nine. Okay. Okay, case number nine is Robert McIntosh Jr., 15 New Street. The description is Robert A. McIntosh Jr., owner of 15 New Street, Sheet 28, Lot 15, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264, to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, seventy-five percent existing, eighty percent proposed, to construct a four-by-twenty, four-foot-by-twenty-foot addition to a detached garage. It's in the RB zone, Ward 7. Welcome, give your name and address, please.
Thank you, my name's Bob McIntosh, I reside at 15 New Street, Nashua. So the owner of the Davis Funeral Home, which is located at One Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. The purpose of the four-feet depth by twenty-foot wide addition is to be able to park the limousine from the funeral home there. Unfortunately, the Davis Funeral Home at One Lock Street is in historical district. We have one bay at the garage, at the funeral home, which houses the funeral coach, the hearse. Unfortunately, the previous owner just recently died, and he was able to park the limousine at his personal home, so, and I know when I took over the business, I knew it was gonna be close, and actually, the limousine is about one foot longer than the existing garage. So the sole purpose of the addition is to be able to be, park the limousine in the garage, and be able to close the doors. Right now, it's currently parked in the garage, but it extends beyond the capabilities of closing the doors at the garage. So, you know, Davis Funeral Home, we've been serving the families in Nashua for one-hundred-and-seventy-seven years, as well as other local communities, and we'd like to continue to do so. Limousine is more of a goodwill gesture than anything, and the only way to be able to park that limousine would be able to have an addition.
Okay.
That's basically it.
All right, so just for the record, you are on a fairly large lot at the end of...
Correct, I'm the last house on the right, it is a dead-end street, and it's actually right behind those new apartment buildings there, on the old BB rubber.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's a fairly large lot.
Correct.
And you have, and there's, you know, modest house there and everything, so, again, this is where we get into the percentages of, of the area, so...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, is there any questions for the applicant? All right, you're all set, it's pretty straightforward.
All set?
Yep, just have a seat.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Pretty straightforward, I mean, huge lot, I don't think, any, no one's ever gonna know that. I'm surprised he's only asking for four feet, you know, a hundred and twenty foot, but I'm not suggesting he can go any bigger, I'm just saying, you know, so...
I mean, in, in keeping with the, the business, it should be six feet, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. Exactly right, so I, I don't...
Well played.
I don't see any issues with this at all.
No, neither do I.
All right, any, any other discussion? I'll make a motion, I think it's pretty straightforward, okay. I'd like to make a motion for Robert McIntosh Jr., 15 New Street, description is Robert A. McIntosh Jr., owner of 15 New Street, Sheet 28, Lot 15, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264, to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, seventy-five percent existing, eighty percent proposed, to construct a four-foot-by-twenty-foot addition to a detached garage, it's in the RB zone, Ward 7. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. Again, as I mentioned, there's a modest house on the lot, it's a very large lot, an extra four feet on this garage is gonna be in, won't be noticed by anybody, and I don't think anybody would know the difference for that. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, it's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. So with that, I make a motion to approve the area variance for Mr. McIntosh at 15 New Street. Seconded by Ms. McKay, any discussion? All in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Again, just be aware, that thirty-day window of appeal.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks for that.
You too, thanks for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number nine. All right. Now, next on the agenda, right, is two rehearing requests? Correct? All right. Okay, so before we start delving this, we just know that there's people in the audience, but obviously, they know they're just here to observe our, our deliberations are, on this. There's no testimony, as I mentioned earlier, in this part of the meeting. Before we get started, I, I just wanna throw something out, just some information that I've kinda gathered, and just trying to, looking at this just a little bit before we go into this process. So, this decision that we made, and I just wanna broach this, and I don't know how else but to say, my thoughts kinda were, you know, with, again, with some counsel, you know, that we can counsel, which means, doesn't mean I get a lawyer, it just means, I do some research, and we do that, right? Just like Mr. Lionel did with the telecommunications stuff, right? So, did some reading, did some talking, asking around, and again, no, no fellow board members, it's just on, you know, one-on-one type thing. But I was just curious as to, you know, whether or not this application, we should've even heard, and what I mean by that is, this, this property is owned for a dog daycare?
Mm-hmm.
And was, was the planning department's interpretation, I'm just asking a question, the planning department's interpretation of the outside display really germane to this application? And should really, in the end, this not even have come to the zoning board? So that's just kind of a question that I kinda have, or a thought that I have, and just explore that, and, and I'm just kinda looking to see if that rings a bell for anybody, if not, we'll just move forward. Mr. Lionel?
Well, first of all, I mean, when we first heard this, I was really scratching my head about the, you know, what we were being asked to, to consider, and the wording, I mean, the, the ordinance doesn't specifically say a dog daycare, it says animal services, and, and we kind of, and that's sort of the umbrella under which a, a dog daycare would, would fall, but, you know, applying this, this retail display thing to, to the dog daycare was just truly weird, I, I said this at the very beginning. So I was uncomfortable with the whole thing. So, yeah, yeah, I agree with you that it seems really, really strange we were asked to, to vote on that particular part of the ordinance, and I'm not really sure we did the right thing. No, I'm, I'm sure we didn't do the right thing.
I agree with Mr. Lionel. If that storage unit, that's for things, not for living, breathing, but aside from that, do we have the ability to challenge that decision? I think that, I hope that we do. I think that maybe not a correct call was made, I don't think we should have heard it. I don't think this should've come here, it's a permitted use, absolute permitted use.
Well, yeah, probably, based on, on, on the wording. I mean, what we, what we might, what we're being asked to do tonight is to say, do we want another go at this? Now, the interesting question is, then, is it the same part of the ordinance that we're gonna be asked to, to vote on?
And that's, that's really why I'm bringing this up, before we even get there, because I just was trying to get a feel for, you know, what your thoughts were. I've, you know, never, you know, I haven't been here as long as Mr. Curry or Mr. Shaw, but I've never run into the situation before, as to, you know, it's, you know, again, Mr. Falk's here, I, I think he's here, you know, as our, as our liaison to the planning department, but again, you know, we're not questioning, I'm not by far even saying anything about the planning department, I think they do a fantastic job, but we are here in a different capacity, and we may see things differently, and I'm, you know, again, no reflection on the planning department.
No, I don't need it.
So, Mr. Falk, if I may ask, from your experience, what options, if we, we're even to discuss this further, or if we were to have, maybe look at this in unison, and we do, what are our options at this point, as far as, what can we, what can't we do?
Well, if you think that, okay, it was advertised for them to come here for the outside play area for the dogs, or outside, that was the closest code section that we had to use, was the outside storage area, so it was determined that that's why this applicant, as well as one on West Hall Street, would come to the board. But if you think that that decision wasn't really proper, or erroneous, or not the best fit... fit, because it is a permitted use in the land use code in this zoning district, permitted uses generally just go straight to the planning board with a site plan, so, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I think if you, if you think that that decision wasn't proper, that they don't even need to come to this board, and they can just go straight to the planning board. Now, we do have two rehearing requests, if you approve them, then that really puts them back to coming to this board, but what would they be coming back for? It would be coming back for something that you may feel is not proper, so I don't think they would really come back to this board, I think they would just go straight to the planning board.
Yeah, we could, but there are other points in the rehearing request that.
You could still go over those other points, but, you know, the issue on the outside storage area is why they were here, and, you know, if the board determines that that wasn't the proper procedure, then you could call it like a moot point or something.
They would basically fail item one, right?
Right.
On the, of the four criteria that we are supposed to vote for.
Of procedural error, yeah.
Or even, may not even.
So, I guess the question is, where do we even get to this point? Or would there be a decision that we make and say, hey?
We have to do something.
You could still go over the four points of rehearing, and you can answer them, like, for example, in the first one, was there a procedural error? You could say that you may, and I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, I just, this is my own thoughts, you could probably say that you think there was a procedural error, because this shouldn't have come before this board in the first place. As far as the illegal decision, in other words, did the board completely address all the points of law required for the special exception and interference? You can say that that's possibly illegal, because they shouldn't have been here in the first place for that. New information, you know, both the applicants, or both the parties that submitted rehearing requests are questioning that, I think they both did, so, that's information that was really brought up before, but now they've explained it in much more detail, they've hired counsel, and they've brought it out into more detail, I think even the applicant and the applicants, the applicant and the applicant's engineer have also brought it up as well, I think they brought it up at the original public hearing. And number four, anything that would or could cause the board to make a different decision, you know, you may be able to say that, based on all the information that you've discussed tonight about whether or not this was a proper case, the decision could've been that you may not have thought it was proper to be there in the first place.
Well, and so what, I mean, assume that we, we say, yes, we grant the rehearing request, and, you know, for whatever reasons, what, I mean, yeah, okay, we do a rehearing, is there a mechanism for us to say, this, we don't think that this ordinance applies, and?
So what happens?
What would we do?
What's really the, the outcome is exactly what Mr. Lionel's, because we don't wanna be back in this loop, because we're saying, hey?
Yeah.
If we believe that we shouldn't have even heard this to begin with, then we're not, we don't want.
It shouldn't have come, then the.
Right, so then, this, what happens with this, you're making a motion to this, or are we just, if we make a motion to approve or not approve the rehearing request, what do we, what, let's just say that we are agreeance that this should've never come to the zoning board, right? And we go through this, and we describe in our words why, can the rehearing request still be denied, based upon that we don't think this is a real case, this doesn't belong here, or does it get approved, and then there's another mechanism, or something that happens before this comes back, or does it come back to us, and then we say at that point, hey, when it come back and say, hey, this is, we believe that we're not gonna hear this, because we don't believe it belongs here?
Well, if we're gonna do that, we just might as well deny the request, and it just goes so plenty.
Yeah, that's what.
It would be heard for another thirty days, and I wouldn't waste anybody else's time, if they've already gone, they've already been with this process since, well, September.
So is the motion to, at that point, in your eyes, in your expertise, to deny the rehearing request? Even with the discussion that ensues? Do you form saying, procedurally, that I'm just not sure?
Probably so, because the applicants probably want this to come back to the zoning board, to start all over, to re-explain this, but if it's not prop, the bottom line is, if you think it wasn't proper to come here in the first place, then they shouldn't be coming back here.
Right.
Really, is what, really what it all boils down to.
How do you prevent that? Not prevent their rights, but prevent?
By denying the request.
I'm saying it shouldn't have come in front of us, and can we then state it should've gone straight to the planning board?
The planning board's a permitted use, go for a site plan.
It's a permitted use, yeah, we can deny the hearing, because it's a permitted use, and it should go straight to the planning board.
And then the planning board can deal with all those A through J issues on that one ninety dash fifty-two section, and they can go over all those, because that's proper in their site plan review.
Right.
It wouldn't be a zoning board issue.
No, because according to our guidelines, our rules, our regs, it's a permitted use, it's already okay.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Basically what we're saying.
All right. What are your feelings? I'm not putting anybody on the spot, I just.
No, I, I think that for the outcome that we want to see, which is that this needs to go to the planning board, and that we should not, we should not have, the zoning board should not have taken this up, did not need to take this up, that we would deny the rehearing request, which then the applicant has, still has to go to the planning board, and the abutters who are objecting have the opportunity to supply all of this information they have, and there's a lot of interesting information in the material that we got with the rehearing request, that would be pertinent to that meeting. If we grant the rehearing request, we're just back at square one with this stupid retail display ordinance that really doesn't fit.
Doesn't apply.
Okay.
And, and I don't see the point of doing that.
I don't either.
Okay.
I think we deny based on the fact that it's a permitted use, and it belongs at the planning board.
Well, that's only one of the criteria.
One of the things.
But, yeah, I, if it, let me put it this way, if it wasn't for that, if there had been an actual ordinance that really was in our purview, that mattered, you know, I'm not even gonna try to make up one, but if, let's say there was one, I would grant the rehearing request, because lots of information that was not available to me at the time of the previous meeting has been supplied, allegations, you know, I don't know whether they're true or not, but they would certainly, I would certainly want the opportunity to examine them again. But given that the only thing we were asked to rule on was something that we, none of us seemed to think is applicable, then the proper response is to deny the request, let it go to the planning board, let the abutters who object present their case to the planning board.
And just for, just for, so that people understand, right, we have a right to look back at our decisions and change our, change our view on.
It's happened before, not very often.
Yeah.
Usually guys are right on with things, but every once in a while, I mean, these things aren't easy, and this code is not easy to read, it's very complex, it can be confusing.
Yeah, well, the good and bad is that, A, we're human, and so that can happen, but B, we're human, and we recognize that, and we're rectifying it.
We have procedures to deal with that.
Yes.
All right, so why don't I, why don't I start going through the first one, so we'll go through both, and we'll have that discussion when we get to each one of those, and we'll just make some statements.
All right, the interesting thing is that some of these things, I mean, about, you know, notice and all of that, you know, there were complaints that there was no proper notice about that second meeting, but I don't know how to deal with this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, for me, I don't think that, I think I was satisfied with what I knew about that, but we can, you want me to read this, and we can discuss that?
Yeah, okay, sure, go ahead.
All right, so there's a rehearing request for owner David and Stephen Lintas, Linetasis?
Lenatssis.
Lenatssis, sorry, Lenatssis Trust, applicant's Ally Bird, BCM Environmental and Law, P L C, P L L C, case address is One High Street, rehearing request from nine, ten, nineteen, public hearing, table to nine, twenty-four, nineteen, David and Stephen Lintas, Lenatssis, I'm sorry, Lenatssis, trustee of the Lenatssis Family Trust, owner Ally Bird, One Hardy Street, sheet sixty-two, lot one fifteen, requesting use variance for land use code section one ninety dash fifty-two A for a fence in the area of outdoor use for a dog daycare, L B zone, ward four. So, there are four criteria that we discuss as a board for the rehearing requests, and the first one is, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
There are two of them, you might wanna say that this one was for BCM.
Yeah, yes.
I think you want both of them together.
And then the other one was from.
They have to be done, they have to be done separately, correct?
I would.
Yeah, they have to be done separately.
Yeah, I'm, okay, but I have.
So the first one, I think I said it, but it's from, it's the requested.
I didn't hear you say the BCM.
Request of the hearing is BCM Environmental and Law, P L L C, okay. So the first question again, was there any procedural error, this includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. I think our testimony is on record, I think we already discussed it, but I'm gonna say it again, I, at this point, believe that I don't think we should've even heard this case under the, under the, under the code that it was presented to us for the outside display. That's my opinion.
I don't think there was any procedural error, in that we, we did, we followed the rules, we did what we were supposed to do, and so, and I don't have any reason to think that there was improper notice, or that anybody was denied the right to be heard. So, my, my answer for item one would be no.
Okay.
Well.
See, I guess my procedural error to me was, I mean, I don't think anybody did anything rightfully wrong, I think that the procedural error now, looking back and really taking a look at that, I think the procedural error was, I don't think the procedure was that we should've had that in front of us.
Okay, let me, let me ask, maybe I don't understand what we're, exactly how we're doing this. Okay, is it required that all of us say no to all four of these in order to not grant the rehearing request, or can we simply write our reasons and then make a motion to grant or deny the request?
So usually, I think what we do is, we kinda go around, just so that we can get a feel for who's out, right, and then a motion is made, and that's where the final vote is, up or down. So, we usually go through this, we discuss it in an open public forum, right, instead of just us sitting here and just saying, yes, no, no, no discussion, I think we discuss that.
All right.
And so, again, we may have differences there, but in the end, you vote how you feel in totality, how you feel about.
All right, I couldn't remember exactly what the rules were, that helps a lot, thank you.
All right.
So, in that case, I would, I would agree that there was an error, you know, we should not have heard this.
Ms. McKay?
We should not have heard this.
Okay, and I state that same thing, too. Was there, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? I'm gonna go out and say, illegal in the fact that, again, if I believe that it shouldn't have been heard, then it's not a legal decision that we made, and again, just coming back and correcting that, so illegal meaning, for me, means that it didn't fall, it didn't, because I believe that we shouldn't have heard the case to begin with, then we made a decision that I'm saying doesn't hold any water, or doesn't hold, so, illegal to me doesn't mean that we committed a crime, it just means it's not, in my view, not a legal binding type of agreement, because I don't believe at this point that that, that we should've heard it because of.
What I think I'm hearing is that it's almost based on the fruit of the poisonous tree doctrine. Anything that was wrong at the inception, any decision, any ensuing decision is going to be based on that first wrong issue. The wrong, where we see it is, we don't feel we should've heard the case, so based on the fact that we shouldn't have heard the case, we made decisions based on what was in front of us then, now we're saying, yeah, we made a, not an illegal, but maybe not the correct.
So, this is a word that I use, I could use that word, I, maybe, I, we made, I made a decision that was, excuse me?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, made a decision that wasn't proper.
You made a decision based on the facts and evidence, or the documentation, or anything that was given to us, we were given this information based on a decision that now we don't think we should have made a decision based on.
And I'll just use the word proper, or.
Well, yeah, I mean, but I, I think, I think we, if you look here, it says, in other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception of variance? And we did, we followed the rules, and so I don't think we, I don't think the decision that we made was made illegally, so I don't think that this fruit of the poisonous tree really reflects here, we all agree that we did our jobs correctly, and we follow the law.
Okay.
That's my take on it.
Okay, good.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I agree.
Mary Ellen?
So, it, it wasn't an illegal decision.
No, it wasn't.
At the time that we made it.
And incorrectly informed.
I would say at the time that we made it.
We.
Yeah.
Incorrectly informed.
But we followed, we followed the law.
We followed, right.
Does the request for the rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing?
Absolutely, it does.
Okay, I believe so, Mary Ellen, okay. Is there anything which would, could cause the board to make a different decision?
I would say yes, ignoring the fact that we shouldn't have heard it in the first place, but if it had been for a reason that was in our purview, given the information, the new information that's been presented, if substantiated, I probably would've made a different decision.
Mary Ellen?
I agree.
I'm on the fence on that, but it's not gonna change my.
That's okay.
My overlook of the case. So, let me make a motion, let me, let me back up, is there any more discussion? I don't wanna, I don't wanna assume so, I think we've, pretty much, so I'll make a motion for owner David and Stephen Lintas, Lenatssis, sorry.
Well, the motion's actually for the rehearing request, right?
Yeah, sorry, it's, the request of the rehearing is BCM Environmental and Law, P L L C, case address is One Hardy Street, this is a rehearing request from the nine, ten, nineteen, public hearing table, two nine, twenty-four, nineteen, for David and Stephen Lenatssis, owner Ally Bird, One Hardy Street, requesting a use variance from land use code section one ninety dash fifty-two, for a fence in the area for the outdoor use of a dog daycare, L B zone, ward four, I am making a motion to deny the rehearing request based on the discussions that we have had on this so far. Seconded by Mr. Lionel, any discussion? Seeing none, it's three to nothing. Okay, so there's another rehearing request for the same, for the same owner of David and Stephen Lenatssis, applicant's Ally Bird, the request of the rehearing is Clayton and Georgette Alexander, case address is One Hardy Street, again, rehearing request from nine, ten, nineteen, public hearing table, two nine, twenty-four, nineteen, to David and Stephen Lenatssis trustee, Ally Bird applicant, requesting use variance from land use code section one ninety dash fifty-two A for a fence in the area for outdoor use for a dog daycare, L B zone, ward four.
Copy all of the, all of the comments that we made from the previous one.
So, so I will make the suggestion, and I think, hopefully it's proper, Mr. Fox, that we can refer to the same discussion ensued, or should we go through this? Mr. Fox, that we can refer to the same discussion ensued? Or should we go through the steps again, and just read them off and...
They brought up some different points, but I think the end result is going to be the same, no matter what.
I think, I think our core, I think the core reasoning that we're having right now is not necessarily for all of us, based on some new information, is kind of that we shouldn't have reheard this, shouldn't have heard this case.
My answers to the first one would also apply to the second one.
Okay. All right. My answers will also apply?
So would mine.
Okay. So, let me, let me make a motion. Is there any discussion, any more discussion? I'd like to make a motion. The property owner was David and Stephen Lenatssis, Lenatssis Family Trust, applicant Ali Bird. The request of the rehearing is Clayton and Georgette Alexander. Case address is One Hardy Street. The rehearing, the rehearing request was from the 9:10:19 public hearing table 2924. David and Stephen Lenatssis, trustee of the Lenatssis Family Trust, owner Ali Bird, applicant One Hardy Street, Sheet 62 Lot 152, requesting use variance for land use code Section 190-52, Section A for a fence in the area for outdoor use for a dog daycare, L B Zone Ward 4. I make a motion to deny the rehearing request, again, for all the discussions that we've had, and for the same reasons why we are denying the previous rehearing request for the same property.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of denying a rehearing request? That's three to nothing. Okay. We're all set with that. We've got some meeting minutes to go over. What have we got here?
Yeah, from 10:22.
10:22. 10:22, or 10:25?
Yeah.
Yeah, 10:22.
10:22.
I was not at that meeting, so I really can't comment.
You could still, we're still, we're still having a meeting, I'm sorry. We were still having, I'm sorry, we're still in session, okay? If you have any questions, Mr. Fox is available tomorrow.
No, actually, not until next week. I'm out, I'm out the rest of the week.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you very much. Meetings, okay. So, we have some, so, we have some meeting minutes from October 22. Again, the procedure is, is you don't have to have been here. You can still vote on it. There's always an opportunity to make changes later. I did go through these. I didn't see anything glaringly out, so I went over those. If no one has any other comments, I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the October 22 meeting minutes.
Oh, I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. All those in favor? That's three to nothing. Do we have the agenda for...
Is there an agenda for that?
It is.
It should be in there.
Yeah, here it is.
For November 16?
Yes, it's here.
Number 26. Okay. Anybody see any regional impact?
I do not.
I don't see any regional impact. Does anybody see any?
I do not.
Okay. So, there's no regional impact.
Dates, I think, were the...
Yes. And then, we had already talked about, so the next thing on the agenda is the, the dates for next year's meetings. We, we usually have two votes on that, right? We had a vote already, and then this will be our second vote on that. We did...
We did make the change for the primary, the New Hampshire primary, so that meeting is actually February, I think it's February...
It was supposed to be 11, but it's the 12 now.
It'll be on the 12.
12, right? Yeah. So...
Hopefully, you have a copy that shows the 12. It's still switched to 11, but it'll be on the 12.
Okay. When we get there, we'll all be reminded, right? I don't think anybody's going to come here on election night, right?
No, I don't think so.
All right. I'm probably going to be working at the polls.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2020 Nashville City Zoning Board, 2020 meeting and deadline dates.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. All those in favor? That's three to nothing. So, the dates are approved. Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. Anybody second that? Ms. McKay? Ms. McKay seconds that? All in favor? That's three to nothing. We're adjourned at 9:44, 9:45. Thank you very much.